All right. Good evening and welcome to the April 26, 2023 City of Edina Planning Commission Meeting. On behalf of the rest of the planning commission, we are grateful you are here in person and are tuning in remotely. Your presence, your curiosity, your participation and feedback is vital to the processes we navigate change together here in Edina. Tonight's agenda is similar to most agenda. I'll go through it quickly so you know what to expect. Start with call to order, roll call, and approval of tonight's meeting agenda followed by prior meeting minutes. Then we'll have special recognitions and presentations. And then the next part of the meeting, community comment, is a chance for any residents who are here in person to speak about a matter not on tonight's agenda. After that, we'll have the public hearing, and there are two public hearings tonight, and that is your chance as a resident either here or tuning in remotely to speak about a matter on tonight's agenda. We are having some issues currently for -- oh, we got a thumbs up. So for those who are tuning in remotely, if you would like to get ready to participate, please call 786-496-5601 and enter conference PIN 1141809, and that'll get you into the waiting room. And we will let you know when it's your chance to speak. After the public hearings, we will have our reports and recommendations. And tonight, we have one item that falls into that bucket, and that is a sketch plan review, similar to the public hearing process, just a bit more informal because it happens before the public hearing process. And that is your chance, and our chance, and the city council's chance, to provide non-binding feedback. For residents in person tuning in remotely, you don't have a chance to testify, but there typically neighborhood meetings, the BetterTogetherEdina.org website is open to comment. And why I want to bring that up is this is your chance for the highest degree of impact on the ultimate decision, because this is the developer's chance to kind of gauge our appetite for change, as well as the communities, and seek feedback, and go back to the drawing board before they put forward in a formal application and then see them for a public hearing. After that, we'll have chair member comments, followed by staff comments, and then we'll adjourn. Before we begin, just want to make it clear to everyone that any and all feedback that's been received, or that's been sent, either through email or the Better Together website, has been received and reviewed. We didn't get much feedback this go around, so we encourage you to participate because we do read that and it helps inform our decisions and recommendations to the city council. With that, I will call the meeting to order. And we'll start with a roll call.
Commissioner Feld.
Here.
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner Padilla.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Day.
Here.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Bornstein.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here. All right. We're all here. That's good. Next, we'll have the approval of tonight's meeting agenda. We have an asterisk on that. We'd like to include as an amendment, and that is to continue item VA Commission Member Review to the May 24, 2023 Planning Commission Agenda. If someone's willing to make a motion to approve the agenda with that condition, that would be great.
Motion to approve with that condition?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Next, we have the approval of meeting minutes for the past two regular meetings, which were March 29, 2023, and April 12, 2023. Welcome a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Next, we have special recognitions and presentations, and this is the Commission Member Review. Is this done through staff carry, or do we just?
That's what you just continued. Sorry about that.
Okay, okay.
That'll happen on May 24.
Yeah, man, connecting the dots. All right, maybe next time. So that'll happen on May 24, everyone, including me. All right, next, we have the community comment period and portion of the agenda. And as I mentioned, this is the chance for residents to speak about a matter not on tonight's agenda. For people who are in person, please come up to the podium, and you have a chance to testify for three minutes. When the light turns green, your three minutes starts. When it's amber, you have 30 seconds left, and when it's red, your time's up and we'll let you know. Now would be the time to come forward if you do. Seeing no one eagerly racing up there, we will close the community comment period tonight, and we will move into our public hearings. So the first public hearing we have tonight is ordinance number 2023-06, the EV Solar Zoning Code Amendment. Before we get going, I'll just give a quick rundown of the public hearing process. So staff will provide a presentation based off of their findings that are collected in the staff report. It'll come back to the planning commission for questions. It'll then turn over, not necessarily in this case, but for any development opportunities to the applicant for their presentation, followed again by questions from the planning commission. And then after that, we'll open the public hearing, and that's a chance for the public residents to testify either in person or remotely. After that, the planning commission will deliberate and make a decision, which is a recommendation to the city council for their ultimate decision. And with that, we'll turn it over to our sustainability manager. Grace, thank you.
Hi, Planning Commission Chair Bennett. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm here to present on the topic of the city's proposed solar and electric vehicle ordinance amendment. After tonight's public hearing, as Chair Bennett described, council will receive this proposal along with your recommendation at their May 16 meeting. So let's dive in. So Edina's Climate Action Plan has two goals which spurred this code review process. To meet its greenhouse gas emission reduction goal, a quarter of single occupancy vehicles on the road need to be electric by 2030. With federal incentives and an increasing market, more EVs are on the road every year in Edina. The city's role is to enable charging infrastructure in a way that serves the public good. Further, the city aims to generate some of its electricity needs within city boundaries, which helps bridge the gap between Excel Energy's goals to have 80% clean energy by 2030 and Edina's goals to be 100% clean energy by 2030. Allowing this much solar infrastructure within the city does rely on acknowledging different types of solar energy installations and allowing for them in a regulated way. So the amendment's purpose tonight is really to clarify and to simplify existing city code related to electric vehicles and solar energy systems. The code amendment proposal does a few things. So first, it defines different solar energy systems, and it defines requirements for installations of these different kinds of systems. Next, it defines electric vehicle chargers and all of the different kinds of equipment that goes with that, and then requirements for installation. So I'm going to walk us through the solar ordinance amendment first. We will walk through these three amendments. So we have defining the three types of solar installations: carport, ground mount, and rooftop. I'll clarify parameters for wind energy as it's being proposed in this amendment, and then note that there are some exclusions about where different kinds of installations can be installed across the city. So getting into these amendments, first, note the format of this slide. So where we're amending language, you're going to see three different columns: the section reference on the left, the current language in the middle, and then the new or the updated language on the right. So this first amendment here is to replace the struck language in the middle column with more specific language on the right. You'll notice later that this struck language is not totally gone from our city code. It is moved to a different section where it appropriately addresses regulation questions rather than a strict definition, which is what this section is supposed to be about. So these changes define carport, they define ground mount, and they define roof-mounted solar energy systems. And now some example images, so we are all on the same page about what are these different kinds of systems. So the first is carport solar, which creates a canopy over parking areas. And so we have two examples here. The one on the left is in St. Louis Park, where you can see that they have individual canopies attached to electric vehicle chargers. On the right, this is at the University of Minnesota, and this is a larger connected canopy over a big surface parking lot. So next is ground-mounted solar, and this is another image from the U. You can see the ground-mounted solar kind of in the mid-left section of the image, just above the carport solar installation, and it's pretty tucked in there in this urban area, and that's how we would expect it to show up in Edina as well. This image also has the benefit of giving you that bird's eye view of the carport solar at the U. And then finally, rooftop solar, which we may all be most familiar with this type. But this image is Edina's Public Works Community Solar Garden, which powers around 70 homes here in Edina. And you might also see this not only on commercial buildings, but also on your neighbor's house or your own home. So the next set of proposal changes includes clarifying setback and accessory use allowances for different kinds of solar installations. The first change is pretty basic. It just clarifies what's already in there, that wind energy shall maintain the same setbacks as principal buildings and shall not be located within the front yard. From there, the proposal adds new regulations for these three types of solar installations. So note that all are allowed as an accessory use. However, carport and ground-mounted solar systems are excluded from R1 and R2 zoned areas. This section also does set a requirement for how high a solar system should or can be mounted. So that's the solar code amendment proposal. Let's move into the new electric vehicle supply equipment, or EVSE code amendment So for this proposal, we have six sections. We will be looking at utility and landscape regulations. We'll be looking at a proposal to add EVSE as a parking reduction strategy. We will review the applicability, the locations of electric vehicle supply infrastructure, how it might be installed, maintained, and allowed to be signed, and then finally, basic definitions. What are we talking about? So first, the first section is amended to specify that the electric vehicle supply equipment height is allowable to eight feet rather than six, which six feet is the standard for most other equipment in Edina. This allows it to extend up to eight feet before needing to meet minimum setbacks. We'll cover this in the definitions section, but EVSE refers to the electric charger itself and necessary components, but it does not refer to associated mechanical equipment like a transformer. The other change in this section is to acknowledge that the franchise fee agreements in place between utilities and the city supersede any code requirements. So here's an example from St. Louis Park, showing screening of the transformer equipment and the Tesla chargers kind of a parallel to that wall. In this image, the transformer is around seven feet, and the Tesla superchargers are around five and a half feet tall, and these are setback within a target parking lot. At City Hall here in Edina, you probably walked by the EV chargers as you came in tonight. They're right by the door, so kind of hard to miss. But the mechanical equipment is setback to the corner of the street, which you can see on this image. The next change relates to parking reduction allowances. The city's purpose for providing a parking reduction incentive here is to encourage EV infrastructure additions. Otherwise, the city cannot require adding EV infrastructure, except as related to the city's sustainable buildings policy. So this is another way to meet the goal of expanding electric vehicle chargers in the city. And as context, you all probably know this, but the current parking space reduction allowances include a 10% parking reduction for transit improvements and connectivity, a 5% parking reduction for the addition of a car-share vehicle space, and a 10% parking reduction for bicycle parking. Moving on to parking regulations, the EVSE code proposal includes adding a new section, Section 361326, and there are seven parts of this proposal, so I'm going to walk through them one by one. First is applicability. Basically, electric vehicle supply equipment is allowed in all zoning districts except for R1 and R2. Someone living in R1 or R2 can still install a home charger in their garage, but not out in the open. The second clarifies that all three types of chargers, which we'll see images of soon, are allowable as an accessory use. However, more than 24 installed in one area is prohibited. This is largely because of the fire safety issues around so much electrical equipment in one place. Finally, this portion confirms that EV chargers must include a cord management system, which isn't standard yet on all chargers, but should be. And, all right, actually, let me back up. Great, all right. The third section here, thanks, clarifies that parking stalls with electric vehicle supply equipment count toward parking minimums. And then the fourth covers locations. So basically, that EVSE can not obstruct a walkway. It must minimize tripping hazards and should follow any ADA guidelines. The fifth requirement specifies that parking stalls covered, served by EVSE, shall be reserved for EVs only. So here are two examples of EVSE locations. In both cases, they don't obstruct walkways, and they include a cord management system. Section 6 covers installation, operations, and maintenance of electric vehicle supply equipment. So electric vehicle supply equipment installation has to follow a variety of codes. The building code, the fire code, and the electrical code all comes into play anytime a charger gets installed. They also must comply with Edina's Property Maintenance Code. For signage, safety signage is required, and wayfinding and usage signage is allowed. For other topics or sign sizes over six square feet, the electric vehicle supply equipment has to follow the signage requirement found elsewhere in the code. So here are some examples of signage around Edina. City Hall has signage at each parking stall. You can see on the far left and in that middle section. And then Public Works has signage as well at each parking stall, but it looks a little different. Note in all of these cases that we have parking limits, so a two-hour parking limit for city electric vehicle chargers, and that we do have ADA stalls that are served by electric vehicle chargers at City Hall. Finally, the code proposal includes a definition of terms for EVs, as well as electric vehicle supply equipment and charging levels. So you can read these here and in your packet. But we've covered a lot, so what do these chargers actually look like? Here's a Tesla supercharger on the left, which is considered a Level 3 or a DC fast charger. It can charge a typical vehicle in a half hour or 20 minutes. The Tesla supercharger on the left is in Maple Grove. I think it's probably at a Target when I look at the color scheme. To the right is a ChargePoint version of a DC fast charger, and ChargePoint is the brand that the city has installed for its electric city fleet to date. Both of these charger examples are shorter than eight feet tall. Level 2 is the most common charger that you see around. It's what we have outside at City Hall. It's what we have at Public Works as well. On the left, you can see a pillar or a wall mount in a parking garage in Minneapolis. And then on the right, a much happier springtime picture of the chargers here at City Hall. Level 1 chargers are out there. They're really your standard 110-volt plug, so we wouldn't expect those to really be seen around the city besides personal charging at home. So then just one more city code amendment proposal to update our screening requirements in a way that acknowledges, again, the franchise fee agreements. And with that, that ends the ordinance amendment proposal. And what we covered tonight, which I alluded to a little bit earlier, is related to the zoning ordinance, but there are a multitude of codes locally, statewide, and nationally that these kinds of equipments must adhere to. So they're listed here just for a little bit of context. And thank you. What questions or comments do you have?
Open it to the planning commission for questions, comments, yeah. Jerry?
Yeah. Thank you, Manager Hankak. So the charging stations, as you've displayed, I mean, obviously, we have ones just outside here, which is on city or public land, right? Maybe I asked it, but how are -- are they metered? I mean, is that like a credit card? Is that how?
Yeah.
I mean, it's not just city vehicles. It's the public can use those.
That's right. They are open to the public as well. You use an app on your phone, or you can use a card, almost like a grocery store discount card that's on your keyring. But either way, you register to gain access to the chargers.
And this ordinance, I mean, as we look forward, we sort of envision this facility, this availability of these hookups, probably in private hands. I mean, on private, I mean, parking lots, things like that, that target obviously being an obvious one, okay?
Yes.
And, okay. And maybe just the Edina municipal fleet, do you know what percentage is electric now? I mean, to tell you.
I would say like 5%. We have a little over 300 vehicles in the city, and maybe just over 10 are electric or plug-in hybrid. So I'm eager for that number to grow.
Sure. But that target number of 10% was, I mean, vehicles in the city.
Community-wide.
Community-wide, not just the city itself.
Yeah, the city itself does have a goal that the light-duty vehicles, so our sedans, our like half-ton pickup trucks and lower, basically, should all be electric by 2030. So that's the city's goal, and that would cover about half our fleet. And then the city's fleet for medium and heavy duty should be electric by 2040. So we're, the city is thinking about how this infrastructure affects the city operation goals as well as community-wide.
So commercial vehicles like that, I mean, say like a dump truck, I mean, that is currently being powered by electric in some cases?
Some is, some isn't. There are electric snowplows, there are electric street sweepers, and there are electric fire trucks. Yeah.
And that can relatively just keep changing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. There's so much questions, I think I'll try to do it in small bursts. I guess the first one for me, I think in the beginning, you mentioned this is a volun -- for businesses that want to voluntarily put solar, why can't the city require that solar be something that we install if you're going to build a parking lot, that you have to have X percentage of solar? So could you just talk more about the volunteer aspect of that versus why can't we just make it something that they have to do?
Yeah, that's a good question. The state of Minnesota regulates the building code and for all jurisdictions within the state. So cities are unable to require regulations that are greater or less than that building code. The state building official has determined that electrical systems that are within a site, so EV chargers in a parking lot, canopy solar, of course, rooftop solar, you're already touching the building, are regulated by that code, and so cities cannot require those additions to, as part of development.
So our goal would be to create the right incentives, right, for developers to install solar. I have a question about that later. Question on the ADA accessibility. So from what I could tell, there is parking stalls where, you know, if your wheelchair accessible, it's a bigger size. It's usually right at the front of the building. And then with solar charging stations, do we want those to also be ADA compliant? So are we saying that we want charging stations to be in the same locations as stalls that are ADA compliant, or are they two separate things? Could you help just clarify ADA-compliant charging and, I guess, ADA-compliant parking?
Yeah, that is also a good question, and this is a dynamic area. This is one reason why I mentioned this multitude of codes a few times, is because many of these codes are actively being revised to account, especially for electric vehicle charging. The American with Disabilities Act is one of those sets of requirements, which is actively being reviewed for how does an EV charger fit into it. So to your question about ADA parking, right now, there are no requirements that if an entity were to install electric vehicle chargers on their property, that any of them need to be accessible, that they should be marked ADA or be near a, be near an entrance, be near a ramp, that kind of thing. In general, practitioners agree it's a best practice, however, that if we're going to install an amenity for the public, it should be available to all members of the public. So that's why you see at City Hall, one of the chargers here serves an ADA stall. There's ambiguity there, to your point about a typical ADA parking stall is wider to accommodate the needs of the users as they get in and out of the vehicle. Right now, the city is not requiring that a stall that is serving an electric vehicle charger be widened to meet ADA standards. We'd like to wait and see what the ADA code ultimately comes out with.
Yeah, just to add to that, too, so it's possible today that if there's one charging station in an ADA stall, and I have a Tesla, let's just say, right, and I don't have any disabilities, I could park there, or I should not park there because it's an ADA stall. So that's kind of the ambiguity. I think that you probably are talking about that, that is still being worked out.
It's ambiguous. I think when a user sees the blue ADA symbol, that means that is for someone who needs that accessible parking, whether or not they have an electric vehicle. So in the case of City Hall, the first use is that that parking stall is for someone who needs that accessible space. The second use is for an electric vehicle charger user. Yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Padilla?
Thank you very much. A few questions scattered kind of in terms of subject. How are the EV, all this, how is this funded? Is this funded through the city budget? Is this funded partially through federal dollars?
Yeah, good question. The chargers that are on city property are paid for through the city's Conservation and Sustainability Fund, which is paid for by utility fees. So the utilities pay the city, and a portion of that goes toward conservation and sustainability. On private, in private areas, the Targets of St. Louis Park or the Coscos of St. Louis Park that we saw today, those are, it depends, right? The city may opt to offer public dollars for that. The developer may include that in their private financing, but federal dollars are increasingly available for things like EV chargers, like solar installations. So it's, there's not a single path.
Okay. And what happens then if you do a solar garden or rooftop, something like that? What do you do with the excess energy? I would assume that there's not quite enough in the winter, but you would have excess in the summer. So what happens to that?
Yeah, especially at people's homes, there's an opportunity to have excess energy. And typically, what the utility arranges with the property owner is called net metering. So what that means is the property uses as much energy as they need, and if there's more, if the solar panels are creating more energy, then Excel Energy buys that energy from the property owner, and they get basically a bill credit on their utility bill.
So conceivably, it doesn't help much in the winter, but your bill is minimized or potentially you have a credit in the summertime.
Exactly, and there's a slight limit to that. It's a 10, like, it's a, yeah, 10% premium. So your solar array would typically not be built to supply more than 10% more of the energy that you would need at any time. But yes, sometimes you could be receiving income from your utility provider.
Okay. And I think you had mentioned that you could have it in a garage or a carport of a private residence. Are there many homes in Edina that don't have either carports or garages?
Yes, some, particularly people who live in a multifamily dwelling. Yes, some, particularly people who live in a multifamily dwelling. And so that is one of our challenges, is figuring out how to ensure that we're not leaving people behind who choose to live in an apartment or another kind of multifamily dwelling that doesn't have a garage, or, yeah, a personal garage or a parking ramp.
So then the idea is that they would be in, just in a parking lot?
Yes, for an electric vehicle charger. Yes.
And are there current installations that don't meet this code, and would they be grandfathered?
There are current installations. Staff has not done a thorough review of everything that's out there already, but yes, the code recommendations include grandfathering these, the existing installations, since they were built to code when they were built.
Okay, just a couple more questions. You mentioned wind energy. So what does that look like? I mean, I assume we're not talking windmills, giant windmills, are we?
No, probably not. Those are not usually feasible to build in urban environments like Edina. So what we might see, like, there's some pretty cool examples in other cities, and I'm thinking of Chicago, where they have a taller building, and the corner of the building has a windmill kind of built in. Yeah, you call it a windmill, but it's much more subtle, and it has kind of a limited energy development ability. So solar is a much, so while our code does not prohibit wind by any stretch, it really leans towards solar, since that's a much more urban environment-friendly renewable energy source.
Okay, but that's something we should be thinking about for our tall buildings.
Yeah.
Okay. Last question. As far as the city goes, and the city vehicles and things like that, what are the contingency plans for power failure?
Yeah, good question. We are looking at building battery storage devices with our electric vehicle chargers so that there's always a secondary source. And actually, solar energy is a really nice complement then. So for instance, this year, we're building out a bank of chargers at our Public Works facility, and we will be looking to the existing solar array that's there to act as a backup power source for us in the case that the lights go out, we can tap into that solar as an independent energy source.
Okay, and I apologize, that brings up one more question. What do you do with the batteries when they're, you know, fully used?
Spent. They can be recycled, they can be refurbished and then recycled. What we're finding is they have a much longer life. You mean the batteries in the vehicles?
Yes, or these ones that are backups.
Yeah, we're finding that they have a significantly longer life than originally thought. So maybe when the Nissan Leaf, one of the early electric vehicles came out, it said, oh, this battery will be exhausted in seven years, and we're seeing batteries that are nearing 20 years and still working quite well. So they can be refurbished, they can be recycled, but we're finding that we don't even have to get to that level for much longer than expected.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sow.
Just one question. I was at the Costco at St. Louis Park and noticed that there was some signage around their canopy chargers, and one of them did have a handicap accessible sign on it. It was closer to the front, but they all asked for EV vehicles only. And earlier, when you were talking about the ambiguity, is there a, is anybody kind of going out and kind of finding what our neighboring cities are doing around the accessible stalls and trying to adjust our policies to fit?
Yeah, that's a good question, and that was part of the review for this code development, was to see how are other cities handling it? And Edina landed where we began, which is that we don't want to compromise accessible parking for electric vehicle charging at this time. So where the city is installing charging, and it overlaps with ADA spaces, we still preference the ADA accessibility. But it's where, it's dynamic, as you observed, yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand the cost of these chargers. I assume business of the city just doesn't go to Jerry's Hardware and buy one and install it. So does Tesla or ChargePoint, do they pay for it, or do you still have to pay for it? How does that work?
Yeah, they are purchased by the property owner. There is sometimes a leasing system, but by and large, I would say 90% of property owners own their chargers outright. So in the city's case, we purchased our chargers. The city is unique from private property owners because we go through a state purchasing contract, so there's a specific bidding system that happens. But we do still own them outright, and we pay to use the online service that tracks when people plug in and when they start to pay and that kind of thing. So ChargePoint makes their money by developing cutting-edge technology that, you know, outcompetes their competitors, and through this cloud service that any owner of a charger remains subscribed to to actually manage the hardware. Does that make sense?
Yeah, okay, I didn't know that. Okay.
So it's similar for a private property owner, although their purchasing piece is probably somewhat different.
So they just own the software kind of part of it?
Exactly, yeah.
Interesting, okay. And then, so, you know, we talk about EV charging everywhere, and when cars first came out, regular cars, there used to be gas stations kind of everywhere, on like every little sidewalk and everything. So do we have any ordinances about gas stations, like converting to EV stations, or anything like that, or are we looking at that at all?
Yeah, there are some state laws that regulate gas stations that are being reviewed by the State Department of Commerce to look at this transition. And the city's role, as we see it, is to advise on our local conditions. So what seems possible as far as this transition? What are the barriers? How does this affect the local community, whether it's the gas station owners, the franchisees, the users, et cetera? But really, it's the Minnesota Department of Transportation and the Department of Commerce that is looking into this question, particularly as funding from the Inflation, no, not the Inflation Reduction Act, the Infrastructure and Jobs Act specifically asks this question. So there's money on the table that states are looking to use to explore.
Okay, then my final question is, you talked about carports, and said they had to be 17 feet tall. Why is that?
So that a fire truck can get through. It's really about fire safety, so that a fire truck can pull under that carport solar to get to either a building fire, a vehicle, you know, any kind of fire that's happening on-site. Yeah, it's clearance requirements for the trucks.
Okay. So, because it said, you know, we're banning them in R1 and R2 districts, and I thought, you know, if people can have a garage, they could have with solar panels on top, that they could have a carport with solar panels on top, but...
Yeah, that's interesting. I think that's a good comment to capture for council to consider, how different is a carport from a garage in R1 or R2? Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Looking this way?
Yes.
So I have a comment, really, as it pertains to the adoption of the ordinance. And I know several weeks ago, when we had the working session, I brought this up. And really, it's around this, the Parking Space Reduction, Item 4. And if you call at the time, you know, I don't think that this part of the ordinance should be adopted. To me, right, this item number four doesn't fit in the city code. The first three items in here offer alternatives to transportation, right? So we have transit, we have car-share parking, excuse me, with bicycles, but EV is not an alternative, right? And we framed it as an incentive for developers, but to me, it's really not an incentive, it's more of an inconvenience to a lot of our residents, particularly our less affluent residents. You know, I did do some research on this last night, and right now, the median income of an EV buyer is $150,000 a year. A great predictor of an EV owner or buyer is somebody that lives in a single-family home, right? We're trying to expand access to people that don't live in single-family residence to the city. You know, with this amendment, right, you've not only given a percentage of your parking to EVs, which is really, I mean, if we're honest with ourselves, preferential and exclusive, so you can only park EVs there. And if you look outside, it's right in the front row, right? So we've given preferential exclusive parking, and we've taken away, on the other hand, parking from residents who don't have EVs. So it's a double hit, right? So we're chaining off parking for people that have EVs, and we're saying, you can't park there if you have an internal combustion engine, and then we're going to remove parking and make it more inconvenient for everybody else. So, you know, I think the free market will work in our favor in this. Like you said, there's already federal funding available for putting this kind of infrastructure in. As more people adopt EVs, I think we'll start to see more of a demand for it, but I don't think the city should include this ordinance in here, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Swath.
Yeah, just to piggyback a little bit off of that, I think when you opened your presentation, you kind of kicked it off with, we need, you know, there's going to be a growth of EV vehicles in time, over time, and we have to build the infrastructure for it. We also aren't demanding that developers do it, so we have to create some kind of incentive system. When I think about the incentive system for a city government, it could be things like, you know, permitting fees if you want to do an install, you could reduce the fees, you know, you could have discount on transit passes if, let's say, it's a parking rite situation, rebates, tax incentives, and then preferential parking, right? So the first question is, is this ordinance just on infrastructure, or is it also an incentive ordinance? And if it's an incentive ordinance, where do we cover the things that I just mentioned, like the permit reduction, the tax rebates, those kind of things? Where does that go?
I would call this an infrastructure ordinance, based on what you just described, because we don't get very far into incentives besides what Commissioner Ryan mentioned about the parking reduction incentives. If we did want to offer, let's say, for instance, permit fee reductions, that would be, it wouldn't be a city code decision, it would be a policy or a program that we could opt to offer. So for instance, the city has a Climate Action Fund, which offers rebates to residents and businesses who do energy efficiency measures on their buildings, or who install high-efficiency electric appliances. So that's a program, it was approved by city council, and I think that's how something like a permit fee reduction or a cost share program would likely be codified.
The other part of it is, you know, when we think about the 5% reduction in parking, if you have 10% EV charging stations, and they'd be exclusive to those with EV vehicles, that's definitely an incentive. It's going to make the EV vehicle driver feel like he has preferential treatment in the city, which might encourage even more EV purchases. So that's, I don't see that as being a bad thing. But it does bring up an equity question. If I could only afford a Nissan Leaf, I don't make enough to afford a Tesla, but a developer is going to only build Tesla charging stations, then I can't plug in because I have my Nissan Leaf. Do we want to also include in here some guidance on having different charging outlets or charging capabilities? So you don't just charge one type of vehicle that could only be afforded by a certain demographic, whereas, you know, it doesn't charge another class of vehicle that someone else could afford? Do you want to include that, or have you discuss that option as well?
Yeah, this is a good question, and there are a few forces at play which causes the city to lean toward inaction. The first one is that if I'm a Leaf driver, I can use an adapter to plug into a Tesla charger, and vice versa. If I drive a Tesla, like, I think there's a Tesla parked outside at City Hall right now, they use an adapter to plug into a non-Tesla charger. So it's kind of like Apple versus Android or something. So there are, there's a market solution. The second one is that there's work at the federal level to streamline this exact question of creating one kind of charger, rather than allowing the market to determine all different types. So in the city's case, we're watching both of these conditions and are not taking action at this time.
One other question on the definition of EVSE. So I guess it's electric vehicle supply equipment, and from what I could tell, there's different levels that you could have in a multi-unit facility versus a commercial property versus at your home. One could be EV-ready. So if I'm building a new home, a new development, and I ask the developer to make my home EV-ready, so it's not actually putting the charger at the home, but it's just readying the house for that type of installation, putting all the electrical work. That is way cheaper than if you just build a home, and then you try to install EV later, the cost is significantly higher, because it's already finished home, you have to reinstall all this kind of stuff. And so then that's EV-ready, and I think the next level is EV-installed, which I think is what EVSE really is trying to say. That's like the finished end product. And then the next category would be EV-capable. So when we talk about EVSE, are we just talking about EV-installed, or are you also thinking about those other levels of EV readiness, you would say, for not just commercial properties, but more so for multifamily unit development and maybe single home development?
Yeah, that's a good question. This does speak to the EV-install because it covers the external components, whereas EV-ready is really internal. It's ensuring that an electrical panel has sufficient capacity, that there is adequate conduit underground, but it does not mean that, as you said, that a charger springs up and is available to be used. So this really covers, once a developer wants to put a charger in the ground, how is that external component regulated?
And this ordinance also applies to multifamily housing, right, and also single-family, you know, homes. So are we saying that the only option that you would have is have an EV-installed, you know, capability at your home, but we won't press for EV readiness or EV-capable? And do we want to consider those other options for, you know, just preparing a home? Because, you know, the first buyer may not have a Tesla today, but they might, well, an electric vehicle today, but they might have one tomorrow. It'd just be so much cheaper for them if the home was built with EV readiness built in already.
Yeah, it definitely would. This brings us back to the challenge of the building code being regulated at the state level. So the city could not require EV readiness, but we take the educational approach. So every year, the city hosts, I'll just mention residential redevelopment as an example, a residential redeveloper half-day training where we get a whole sustainability section that covers things like future-proofing new builds, so ensuring that they're EV-ready, they're solar-ready, defining what those are, so that builders are literate and confident in what they might be able to offer an interested new homeowner.
Thank you.
Great.
Other questions, comments? All right, yeah, I got a couple. So, yeah, we had a work session that I think spurred some changes in here, too. I know one of the things we brought up was the right-of-way, and that looks like it was eliminated. I think one thing I'm reminding myself, that this, like, the goal here isn't to find the solution, it's to make way for a whole host of solutions. We need to get our ordinances up to speed to allow stuff to happen, not necess, so I feel like I just naturally get lost in how do we incentivize and get to, from 357 vehicles to 9,100 in seven years seems nearly impossible unless there's heavy requirements or heavy incentives. But if this is just step one to just make things available to be done, I'm more in support of it. I do get stuck... I do get stuck with the incentive portion of it, too, in that I think you allow the free market or the developer to kind of control the destiny of their site. Some sites that have EV and accessibility, it's like they might overpark the accessible parking spot, so that's why they can afford to kind of do both. I've seen that done. So that site might only need eight spots, but they have 10 and two of them are the EV, so that's why they can. So there's a lot of conflicting codes, and I'm glad you shared that slide because there really are like 10 different things that touch us, and we're just trying to make way to allow change to happen toward that. I just, I don't see like a lot of answers coming from this. It just opens the potential a little bit more. So, I mean, I'm more in support of it than against it, but I think the reality of some of the data we know is most people in our city that have electrical, electric vehicles are in single-family homes, and this doesn't really apply to them necessarily. So how do we get, how do we get that infrastructure and that readiness in place in other areas and at least open some potential for it? So I guess with that, we have, this is a public hearing, so if we don't have any more questions or comments, and you are the presenter, we will open the public hearing, and we'll start with those who are here in person. So if anyone is here in person and would like to speak on this matter, please come up to the podium to testify. You have three minutes. Light will turn green when you can speak. When it ends up turning red, we'll let you know. Seeing none, we'll turn it over to our waiting room remotely. So do we have anyone in the queue ready to speak?
We do not have anyone in the queue waiting to speak, but I would recommend waiting one minute due to the delay in broadcast just to make sure nobody joins us.
All right, thank you.
All right, I'll start the timer.
All right, now welcome, a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
All in favor, say aye. So move, public hearing's closed. We'll take it back to the planning commission. If people have comments and would like to share, yeah. Commissioner Morana.
Yeah, I'd just like to address two comments made by fellow commissioners. One, first is Commissioner Day's comment, which I think is really perceptive about, you know, the giving credit for EV parking and overall parking minimums. Because really, EV, you're right, EVs are not replacing cars in any way, it's just another form of energy for the car. The only reason, I think, in Edina's case specifically, why I don't think that would matter so much is that we already are kind of heavily overparked in terms of requirements for minimum parking in the city. And so unless we got rid of minimum parking standards, you know, I'm not, can you think of anywhere where you haven't been able to park, you know, recently? So I just think things are, you know, our standard is so high, and this is what we're, one thing we'll be looking at, right? Is that our standard is so high, I feel like the city is doing this to encourage this, but not really to significantly reduce the amount of parking that's being used. But that's, you know, you can reply, of course, but that's my thought, is that it's an excellent, excellent point in many ways because it doesn't really change a lot. But in this case, we're so overparked, I don't think it matters. The second point was Commissioner Smith talking about EV charger-ready homes, and that's also a good point. But likewise, like minimum parking requirements or having parking at, say, an apartment building, the cost of parking built into the cost of rent, that adds to the cost of a building or a domicile, even if you don't own a car. So it assumes that everyone owns a car, right? So if you don't own a car and you live, you know, you buy a house on the E-line or an apartment or rent an apartment on the E-line, then having something that's EV-ready would actually increase your costs for kind of no reason. So it's one of those things, I think, that kind of balances back and forth. But anyway, those are just my comments. Thanks.
Great comments. Any others? Responses?
Yeah. All right. There you go. So I understand your point on the parking piece, right? But I do know, right, if my memory serves me correctly, the, it was two weeks ago, I think you brought up the restaurant that was, that failed due to the lack of parking. And I had seen and talked to people since then about that restaurant. They asked me about that question. They said, "Did you have a hand in killing that?" And I said, "No, I wasn't part of that." But they said, you know, "A lot of the feedback that I saw was that residents in the area were concerned that if there wasn't enough parking, that this parking would spill out into the residential areas and in front of their homes," right? So we may have situations now where there's, where we have ample parking, but, you know, as we go forward in the future, right, people will, as we reduce our parking, then need to spill out into other places, right? And I think you'll get a lot of pushback from that from residents. The other part here is really, again, in the spirit, in the terms of how the city code is written, right? For me, being an engineer, I'm like, this doesn't fit, right? This isn't, this goes against the spirit of what this part of the city code is. We're saying, these are alternatives to parking, so therefore, you know, you can have less parking available, but again, EV is not. So, and then I have trouble with the comment made by Commissioner Smith about the incentive around parking, right? So in a time when people are paying record highs for groceries and utilities and housing, I certainly am not going to go out and say, "Well, I'll get to park in front, and so I'm going to buy a Tesla." That's, you know, like, an incentive, front-row parking isn't a strong enough incentive when all of us are hurting financially right now, right? I mean, really, everybody. And so I don't see it as an incentive for our residents, like, to say that they'll get to jump the front of the line and therefore they're going to pay way more for a car. We need to be finding creative ways to incentivize our residents to adopt EVs, not to incentivize our developers to put them in. And again, I think the free market will play its role with the developers, but, you know, we certainly can't put it in this ordinance, and I think there's work to be done. But as a community, we need to incentivize residents, you know, whether it's tax breaks for, you know, installations in your home and whatnot. You know, I think we'll really push the needle when we incentivize residents, not developers here in this case. So I think I covered everything I wanted to say just now, but, yeah, that's, you know, again, I just don't think this fits, and so I wouldn't recommend to the council that they adopt this ordinance with that specific line item in there.
Great. And, yeah, before passing it to Commissioner Smith, you know, this is a recommendation to the city council, so we can add conditions to that, and if you have one like that, that's, I'd recommend speaking up when we, when someone proposes, either way. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, a couple points. I think, you know, we're all learning and we're all sharing ideas. So I think with the, with the new construction is how I would think about making your home EV-ready. It's going to cost like $900 roughly to make your home EV-ready. Retrofiting that home later is going to cost about $4,000. So the math kind of seems like it's smarter, I would say, to EV-ready your home. Of course, if you could have the city put permitting fee reductions, et cetera, that could make that price even lower. Essentially, it's a better idea to do it early when you construct the home versus retrofitting later, more so for single-family homes rather than commercial buildings or multifamily homes. Totally get that point. With regards to incentives, you know, yeah, if I'm going to buy an EV vehicle, it's usually on the margins, right? I'm going to buy a brand-new Toyota Highlander, $60,000. I'm going to buy a Tesla, $65,000, right? So what I'm looking at is $5,000, is like breaking point for me. So what could be done by the city, et cetera, to help tip me over the edge to get me to buy that electric vehicle? You know, so that's why the tax rebates is a good program that would come, hopefully the city could incentivize that. Of course, the charging infrastructure, the more that we have, the better. We certainly drive that. But then, two, if I don't have to park in the back of the parking lot and I could park in the front of the parking lot, I don't know, that's a benefit for me in rush hour, right? If I'm trying to get somewhere and I'm like circling. I was in Luns just the other day, right on Fifth and France, I drove around that lot like six times trying to find a parking spot. And there's like two nice open spots, it was ADA, you know, so I can't use it, but I was circling like six times. Now, if there was like an electric vehicle charging station there, I'm like, hey, this is a huge benefit to me. I just save like, you know, 10, 15 minutes every time. So I think it's on the margins is my main point there, and I think it's like the whole package that has to come together. And anything that we could do to make residents more excited of using the city services, the better.
Commissioner Felt?
I'm going to weigh in. I, if my memory serves me correctly, the Lorient, they provided 40 spaces for public. I mean, you can park in there as public and go across the street and go to Brooker's and get a bagel. And that developer put, was that six years ago that was built? That developer put in electric charging in there for, I don't know how many he did, but he put a few in there. So that, two things. I think if you're developing a residential complex and you have to compete for tenants and you want quality tenants, you're going to do stuff like this. So I think kind of supporting that is just fine. And in terms of residential, I live in a neighborhood where all the new homes are kind of custom-built and people want the bells and whistles, and owners are happy to kind of purchase those things. So I don't know, and this, and this doesn't involve residential construction. Most of these things are about kind of commercial infrastructure or larger residential complexes, if I'm--
Multifamily and commercial.
Yeah, okay. So I'm all for a reduction in parking, period, across the board. I think people should get out of their cars and use other forms of transit. So I'm okay with, personally okay with reduction in parking.
Any other comments?
Yeah, real quick, I agree with that. I'm not personally aware of any circumstance where I or anybody else has been unable to park in an apartment building, park their combustion engine in a apartment building parking lot. If we're aware of a systemic problem, let's talk about it. If we think that reducing parking by five spaces or something is going to disenfranchise somebody with a combustion engine, I mean, I think, I don't, I just don't think that's like, I think it's hypothetically possible but not realistically a major concern. So the incentive aspect of this doesn't trouble me at all. And then I agree with what some of the other commissioners have said about, there's a bigger issue here, we should talk about how to incentivize some maybe bigger changes, but those probably are within the province of federal and state authorities, not local authorities, and this is an attempt to bring our local ordinances up to date. And so if we want to participate in state proceedings or think about maybe big-picture ways that fall outside the scope of our jurisdiction to encourage some of this stuff, that, all for it, but I wouldn't get hung up on, you know, on that with respect to this ordinance in particular, so.
Thanks. Any other comments? Commissioner Strauss? Commissioner Day?
Yeah, so I guess that, to me, seems very anecdotal in terms of having personally experienced to being inconvenienced by this, and that, yeah, hypothetically, we are disenfranchising, people are creating haves versus have-nots by doing this. You know, we live in a metro area that has the average coldest temperature out of any large major area. We have the most days below zero. We don't have an advanced public transit system in Edina. Our sidewalks, if, I don't know if anybody else here runs around them as often as I do as a marathon runner, but I can guarantee you that people do not clear them within 48 hours of snowfall very often. So it takes away a lot of that accessibility. So whether we like it or not, right, cars are a very main part of the way we get around in Minnesota. And with, I mean, it's still really cold, it's raining right now, every single one of us, maybe except for you, drove here, that's obviously a walk, but, you know, it's, again, to me, it's not the right place to create this incentive. I think it will do elsewhere, and I do think it's the city taking apart a place and particularly disenfranchising our lower-income residents, people with small children, elderly, people with disabilities, right? We are essentially removing parking, and Commissioner Smith just said, as he was driving around Luns and Byer, he couldn't find a spot. It does happen, it does, there are busy times when that happens, right? So it will happen, and, you know, when you see a lot of these electric vehicle parking stalls right now and you say, "Wow, it would be really great to park up in front, there's an open spot." Well, there's an open spot because not that many people have electric vehicles, have been able to afford them so far, right? And I, so anyways, again, I don't see this, this part of the ordinance as something that should be adopted, and I would, I would recommend that to the city council. Others are feel, are obviously free to disagree, but that's, you know, I do think it's, again, not appropriate here.
Thank you. Other comments? Yeah, I guess I'll share some final ones. Yeah, I'm on either side of the fence regarding that topic, and again, I think this is just, regardless of getting this right or perfect, it's the first step to then start making some change or allowing change to flourish or happen. It has to flourish to achieve some of this stuff in seven years. And then it just gets, I think all of us, there's a responsibility for the city to then, if this gets approved in any way, to start speaking toward the incentives and how we actually plan to meet these goals. And one story I'll share is, you know, I have a friend down in Arizona, and he was looking to buy a new vehicle, and he specifically bought an electric one because the city compensated the first two hours of parking at a variety of locations around the city. So he didn't have a lot of money, he didn't have a facility where he lived, but he would go out of his way to park at these places to charge. So like, habits can change and people can make better decisions when you do incentivize in some way. So I wouldn't want to get in the way of having more of this stuff happen to allow people to make a change from gas because they're going to have a car regardless. It's like, which, which one are we going to choose if you're going to have a vehicle? I think, you know, we're making a commitment to choose, to err on the side of EV. Whether or not that's right, I support walking and biking and other forms of transportation, but I'm kind of torn on that from the points you mentioned, but support it from the points others mentioned, so that's kind of where I'm at. And thank you so much for all your work.
Great. Thank you.
I guess with that, we have to make a recommendation. So if someone would like to make a motion, welcome.
I'll make a motion that we approve what was presented to us with the condition that investigating the 17-foot height for carports. And secondly, Commissioner Day has convinced me that we should remove the part about the incentivized parking part of it, reducing parking. Otherwise, leave it as is. That's my, that's my proposal.
Do we have a second to that? And then, and then we'll open it for discussion if there is a second. But first, is there a second? But first, is there a second?
I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that, can you say the part, say that again about the, the recommendation? I didn't catch it.
You convinced me, so what was, that we should not include the part where it's your, uh, can reduce the amount of parking for having EV space.
Sure, okay, thank you.
I think it's a bad precedent, right?
And before we do a roll call vote, open it for discussion, yeah? Or any further amendments or...
I'm wondering if we can edit that a little bit? Um, you know, if, if we can wait, um, for that amendment, you know, for a later time or something. I, I feel like maybe there's a larger group that can, the city council can also discuss the 5% reduction? Um, or maybe we can wait for that for a later time, or if we can just say that in a different way, that we, that we are mixed about the 5% reduction?
I think it could be evident in the vote if there, I mean, there's a second, so we can vote on that. And if it's a split vote, then it kind of illustrates there's...
Okay.
Otherwise, it, it feels and city council should see that there's just general support of this from the discussion so far. Uh, so with that, any other comments or discussion? Yeah, Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, so, so just a comment. So what we're saying is that, yes, you could reduce your parking space by 5%, have 10% as EVSE. That's really a 15% reduction for, for folks with gas-powered vehicles, because that 10% is exclusive. If we make the 10% non-exclusive, would that be something that you'd be able to digest? So that EV and gas-powered vehicles could park in an EV spot? Is that something that you're, you're not open to? Okay. But that would be the alternative, I would say, right? Because then it's just 5% instead of 15.
Any response to that?
Can we clarify that 5% versus, because I've got 10% transit improvement in my not understanding your 10% transit improvement, 5% car share, 10% bicycle reduction and 5% EV? Do I have that right?
Right, so including EVs would allow, including, let's say you have 100 spaces required. They would say, well, I'll make 10 of those electric vehicle-only spaces. Um, and then they get a 5% reduction because of that. So then they have 95 spaces, 10 are, should have had a slide on this, 10 are electric vehicles, which means that only 85 are allowable for internal combustion engines.
Is that what you meant by the 15%? Okay, got it.
Does everyone understand that enough? What's, what's at hand and what's proposed? Because that is not what, I mean, her example is not what we're supporting.
Yeah, I, I think it's an interesting proposal for a compromise, but it's, it wouldn't, I see that as a non-starter because they're, those EV spots are just gonna immediately be taken by a combustion engine. I mean, let's be honest, they'll just be, you know, so that's not in the spirit of what they're trying to do here, right? So, uh, I mean, I think it's an either all or nothing. And then, I mean, it certainly, it's something I think that can be revisited at a future date when it's more applicable to, you know, our realities of the balance between cars. But at this time, I would say it's either a, a strike it or not kind of proposition.
Yeah, over there.
Just a reminder that this, you know, we're not dictating anything to the city council, right? We're just making a recommendation so they can ignore us or whatever. So that's, just to clarify that, right?
Yeah. Commissioner Smith?
So with a good compromise, then we just strike the 5% reduction? Is that really what you're saying? So if we say that, you know, you don't get a 5% reduction in your parking spots, but you have to have 10% of your EV vehicles? Is that what the compromise is? I mean, what the recommendation is?
Yeah, Minnesota state law precludes us from requiring, um, electric vehicle chargers. So we could not only require without offering some kind of incentive.
So with that, I, I second the motion.
Let's do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Feld.
I vote in favor.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Pedia?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Nay.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Nay.
Commissioner Bornstein?
Nate.
Chair Bennett?
Nay.
Oh, 4-4.
There, that's, that's the message we're sending. Thank you, guys. All right, so that concludes that part of our public hearing and we're moving along. All right, next order of business is Public Hearing B-23-06, and this is 6805, the retaining wall setback variance request. We have Plenar Akker here to present.
Yes, thank you, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. The property under review is at 6805 Paiute Drive, and it is located here, it's on the north side of Paiute. The existing 12,752-square-foot lot is improved with a home that was built in 1967 and is located on the north side of Paiute. The lot has a retaining wall on the east side, you can't really see it, um, on the aerial here, uh, but it's partially on the neighbor's property. You can see it on the survey here. It's mostly on the neighbor's property until you get quite a bit further south. The height of the retaining wall is a little over six feet towards the back of the lot, and then as you get to the front, it, it comes down to about a foot or foot and a half in height. So the ordinance requires a minimum three-foot setback when you have a retaining wall that is four feet in height or taller. A number of years ago, I want to say five years ago or so, um, there are, or there were no setbacks required for retaining walls regardless of how tall they are. So if you've driven through Indian Hills, I think you've all seen some very impressively tall retaining walls, and some of those are right on the lot line, um, and some of them are on the right-of-way. So, uh, the ordinance was changed in order to address some of these very tall retaining walls. If they're gonna be that tall, they would need to be moved on to or further away from, um, the lot line. And also, uh, any retaining wall that's taller than four feet has to be engineered, because years ago, we didn't have, uh, engineering requirements on some of the retaining walls and, uh, we did end up with some disasters. So the property owners, this is just a highlighted version of that retaining wall, would like to move that retaining wall all onto their property. However, they'd like it to be right on the lot line, which is, uh, not uncommon throughout the city. There's plenty of examples of that. Many retaining walls have been, uh, in place for many years, um, as, uh, has been the wooden one that's there currently. That is probably about 30 years old, um, and it's in very rush, rough shape. It needs to be replaced. So, oh, here's some photographs, just illustrating some of the, uh, structural integrity or, um, not-so-integrity of the retaining walls that are currently there. The primary issue is, um, is the variance justified? Moving the wall onto the applicant's property is a reasonable expectation that the variance approval would accomplish. It allows a new one-foot to six-foot-high wall that is similar in height range to existing to be relocated on the subject property instead of maintaining it on the neighbor's property. Access into the rear yard will not be compromised. There is also, uh, provision in the ordinance that requires, uh, any retaining wall that is four feet in height or less can be right up against, uh, a lot line. There is no setback required for that, however. Um, if it is in the side yard, you have to have one side of your house, um, clear of a three-foot pass in order to get to the rear yard. Um, so, uh, depending upon where a retaining wall is, uh, sometimes you would have to have a setback for that. Are there circumstances that are unique to the property and not common to every, um, similarly-zoned property? The new wall will be four feet in height or less for approximately half the length of the wall. As you go further back, then it does get taller. Towards the very back, it is at its tallest, which is close to six feet. The applicant is hoping to correct the circumstances of encroachment onto the neighbor that was not self-created or because of an action on their part. This, um, wall predates the current owner's, um, but is now their responsibility to try to address the issue of, uh, the non-conforming wall and, um, having to replace it. Will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? Granting the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Um, all other aspects conform to the ordinance requirements and a portion of the, um, wall is four feet in height or lower, um, so it certainly is allowed to be at that, uh, zero setback line. Staff supports the variance as, as requested for side yard setback at 6805 Paiute Drive for a retaining wall replacement, um, based on the fact that the original wall was not built by the current owner and is partially on the neighbor's property. Um, and there was also, um, in your packet, uh, an email from the neighbor stating that they're in full support of moving that wall. Um, approving the variance allows the wall to be correctly placed on the, on the, uh, subject property, and the proposed retaining wall varies in height with no more than half exceeding that, uh, four feet. So approval should be subject to the following conditions. Uh, the survey and plans received date stamped March 30th, 2023, and the engineering memo dated April 21st. With that, I can stop and answer any questions you have. Um, the homeowners Rich and Renee Cox are here, um, and I believe their landscape contractor, Tim Bellin, was gonna be available on WebEx. So with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Do we have any questions? Yeah, Commissioner Day?
Just a quick question about, I believe this, this is an email that was included in the packet, um, just as, you know, as I'm thinking about granting variances to the code and whatnot, and could it be pushed further back? Could we adhere to the three feet? Um, and I was like, all right, is there really a good reason that we can't? And then this email said, I believe, I don't know if this is from the City of Edina Planning Department or which one this is from, but it, it does call it specifically that if you were to abide by the current code of the three-foot setback from the rear of the wall, the result would permanently block equipment access into the backyard. So who is that note coming from? I just wanted to clarify, I wasn't sure who that was.
That's from the property owner.
Okay, okay. So what equipment access is it that would be, would be worried about getting back there and say that it can't get back there?
And I guess that would be a, a good question for the property owners.
Okay.
So if you, if you look at that side of, you want me to open that?
Yeah.
Assuming we don't have questions, yeah, feel free to answer and then if you have other matter to present.
So if you look at that side of the yard, what would we need to do? If I had to take out a tree, I wouldn't be able to get anything back. There's, there's very large trees back there. You also look on that side of the house is the air conditioning. So if I bring that three feet over, I've already got probably three to four feet in space from the house the other way. There's not much, there's not much left there if we had to bring that wall back in.
And then if you look at the other side of the home, you cannot, there is not enough space between our home or the garage and our property line to get anything back there. And whether it's, um, electrical, again, it's trees, it's anything, and there's also a manhole back in the corner by the electrical that has had to be accessed a couple times since we've been there. So we're just trying to keep things a little open and make things just stay as is. We just want to rebuild the wall and it's fallen twice already. It was first done by smaller bil, blocks. That caved in because of the height of the hill that we have to deal with. We do not have a flat backyard. And then now this second wall is rotting and we just want to replace it and we want to do it correctly and we want it to stay for years to come and not have it be infested by ants and critters.
So, thank you for clarifying, Brad. I really, it was, it was, what I, all I was trying to do, right, was, is to make sure that we gave back more explanation to the spirit of the, the variance piece, especially number two, right? Are there circumstances unique to your property that are not common to every, everybody else that are not self-created, right? And so I wanted to just hammer that home and say, all right, there is a darn good reason that you can't bring this three foot back, right? So, thanks.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, this is a, a question, just two questions. The first one is, you know, I know this house was built in 1967, if I'm not mistaken, right? Um, what would cause, uh, someone to build that retaining wall on the neighbor's, passing neighbor's property line? What would cause that to happen?
Not the whole, not the whole wall is on the neighbor's property. I mean, it's on the property.
Yeah, if you can come up or, or if...
Who knows? Maybe it was built on the property line, how long ago? 1967? Could have been built right on the property line. We're talking six inches as it goes forward. So it could have moved that way over time, or maybe it was, somebody didn't do a survey and they just built it on the property line. And when it was replaced with the railroad ties, I don't think it was done intentionally to be six inches over on their side. I mean, that's the extent of it. We're talking six inches, that one part of the wall is on their property.
Yeah, I guess, um, from a, a process perspective, I've had to build a wall, um, just recently when I first moved in, and I think the, I don't know, the wall builders did it and I didn't have to do anything. I'm guessing there were permits that had to get pulled and maybe surveyors, so I'm guessing that's probably what got missed in 67?
Yeah, I can't speak for what happened in 1967. I would suspect a lot of landscape projects, even currently, may not require a permit. Um, but there were quite a few more, uh, projects, landscape projects that would not have required a permit from the city at the time. So some things end up in a spot where they shouldn't, um, and a survey wouldn't be required. They're looking for the lot line and it didn't quite make it. So it's not, it's not uncommon, we do run into that on occasion.
Example, as we get the survey done, we now know our neighbor on the other side, part of his driveway is on our property, so, sorry.
Yeah, I guess the last question, and you kind of touched on it here, but, you know, I'm guessing this might be happening across Edina where there might be prop, you know, people encroaching on other folks' property lines and they have no clue for years until something happens where a retaining wall has to get built or it collapses or something happens. And I'm guessing that's what happened here, where the, the retaining wall started to degrade, and then you start researching to say, okay, let me rebuild this thing, and then you realize, is that kind of how it came to be?
That's exactly, we started out with a plan, we wanted to redo the wall, then as we got closer, then we find out because it's of a certain height, uh, it has, it has to get a permit to, to build it, and suddenly we're into this process. That's exactly how it happened.
Got you. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Plenar Akker?
I'm just gonna say thank you for being patient with the process.
Sure. Hey, it was interesting listening to EV. I think you wanted the comment, so, okay.
Any other questions? I guess we'll give the applicant, do you have anything else to say or you feel good about where things are?
Yeah, unless there's a reason you think it, I, I, oh, sorry. So unless there's a reason that you think it shouldn't be approved, I can provide more explanation, but I'm fine with it.
Yeah, no, this is just part of a public hearing, so for people tuning in that maybe didn't read this as much and are lightly informed, if you, if you had anything else to say, just give you an opportunity before we give the chance for the public to testify.
He did go to the neighbor, you know, Rhonda Caesar and his family members, because he's one of the original owners of the neighborhood, and, you know, I talked to him. And because he is an older gentleman, I wanted to have a third party for his representation. Okay, we're not going into his yard, we're not destroying it, we're not taking down his trees, because there's a huge tree over there in the corner. You know, and I just asked him how he felt about us... You know, and I just asked him how he felt about us replacing this wall, and he was okay with that. And again, we're just trying to make the best of this hill in our backyard and not have the whole, like, his backyard float into ours that floats down into the Johnsons...
We're built on the side of it.
Right? And we're just, we're trying to maintain the integrity of the...
And improve the property.
Yeah, the topography of the neighborhood is all what we're after.
Thank you. Again, this is the portion of our public hearing that will open it to any residents who are here in person that would like to testify. Please come forward. You have three minutes to speak. Seeing none, we'll open it to the phone line again. The number was 786-496-5601. Info could be on your screen, I hope. Enter conference PIN 1141809, pound, to get into that waiting room. Do we have anyone waiting to speak right now?
We do not, but I recommend we wait one minute due to the delay in the broadcast.
All right. We ask for your patience again as we wait.
I was thinking that same thing. Sorry.
It has been one minute, so I think we are safe to proceed. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome. A motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Public hearing is closed. I think it's, before we deliberate quick, it's important to share, both this as well as the last public hearing, had no comments on Better Together, edina.org, so, I mean, that is out there as a conduit for people to share their insight about public hearing matters, and we didn't have one for this, but it sounded like the neighbor was okay with the situation as proposed. Welcome, any comments or motions?
Just quick comments. So one, thank you for acknowledging the Better Together Edina thing. I think we need to make sure that we continually do that, you know, whether there's comments or not, and acknowledge those comments. As you said, the neighbor did send an email saying fully supports it, so, you know, I would motion to approve the variance to the setback.
I'll take that as a motion.
Second, and can I also make a quick comment?
Absolutely.
I'd just like to congratulate you on your patience, your perseverance, your diligence, and your aspirations, so thank you, and I fully support your desire for a variance.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you.
Have fun. All right, next item on the agenda. We are into our reports and recommendations portion, and with that, we have a sketch plan review of 5100 Eden Avenue, and with that, we have Director Teague here to provide a presentation. As mentioned earlier, the sketch plan is very similar to the public hearing process. It's just an informal process, so this is our opportunity as a planning commission, then followed by the city council, to provide non-binding feedback to the development team or whoever other applicant would be here, and that allows them to go back to the drawing board, take that feedback, and come back with a more optimal version with a formal application, and what would follow there is the public hearing process. So with that, Carrie, thanks.
Great, thank you, Chair, members of the commission. So this property is located in the Grandview District, just across Highway 100 here from City Hall, the intersection of Arcadia and Eden. Here's a picture of the building. It's the Eden 100 Building, oftentimes referred to as the building on stilts. This site is located in the, as I mentioned, in the Grandview District. It's guided in the comprehensive plan for a mixed-use center. It's currently zoned planned office district. Now, these next series of slides come from the Grandview District Development Framework and the transportation plan that was done in this area. So it was designated, again, as the mixed-use center. A lot of the drawings that were put together for that document show housing on the site. So you can see the idea, and not that the site had to develop specifically to this, but this was the idea brought forward and supported by the Grandview Development Team for row housing along Arcadia with greater height behind the building. This is the public work site across the street. So same configuration shows up in the public realm document. Here's another drawing. Note that the project across the street, the senior project, does have units that face the street, but it is within the massing of that building. So what the applicant is proposing here is to tear down that, the existing 38,000 square foot office building, and build a seven-story, 138-unit apartment building. 14 of the units within the project would be provided for affordable housing. So here's a rendering. I'll let the development team go through the more detail of the project and describe the units themselves, but this first view here on the top is from Arcadia, if you're standing at the public work site. The other, from Eden, there would be entrances off both, both Eden and Arcadia. Here's that Eden access, Arcadia to the underground parking. So this rendering, or this diagram, is from the Grandview Transportation Plan. Within that document and the development framework, we talked about having frontage roads along Highway 100. You recall with the Perkin site development across the way, this frontage road showed up in those plans, and with that project, the developer at that time dedicated a large area of that project to the city for that future road, so we own the land should that road ever go in in the future. With the site we're looking at today, this frontage road is located within the existing Highway 100 right-of-way, so there's no additional land needed for this project. So some of the things for the planning commission to consider here, the proposed land use of the site, the proposed height, again, this is a seven-story building, the proposed setbacks, PUD criteria, don't need to get into the specifics there, that would come with a formal application, but how the plan fits into the Grandview Development Framework and those guiding principles. The applicant has responded to those seven principles and included in your packet. I want to touch on density. So this is, within this, within the Grandview District, the density range is between 20 and 100 units per acre. The proposal here is for 100 units per acre, so it is on the very top end. Commissioner Felton asked an excellent question this afternoon, asking what the density is of the project that was approved across the street, if you just take just the senior housing site. So the density of that project is 48 units per acre, so it is, it's half the density. It is a seven-story, or will be a seven-story project, but just to give you a comparison of the density of this proposal. I touched on the row houses along Arcadia with the height toward Highway 100. With this proposal, the main mass of the building is closer to Highway 100, and as you can see, it has the two sections of the building toward Arcadia, so in a way, they're following those principles of having the greater massing toward, but it's not that defined row house along Arcadia. Building setbacks, the setbacks, let's see. Yeah, this, so this diagram shows how the red line is the property line, so you can see the setbacks are pretty close at four feet, and a little this point intrusion here, that's about four feet. Rest of the building is set further back. You can see on Eden here, there's quite a large amount of right-of-way, so this project would appear to have a similar setback as the senior building across the street. That does have a five-foot setback itself, but there is additional right-of-way there. So setbacks are generally consistent with the new buildings that have gone into this So this is just a very rough estimate of the setbacks. Again, this is sketch plan, so they're not exact, but you can see they would be needing flexibility through a PUD ordinance for setbacks on all sides, for height as well. This is a four-story, 48-feet overlay height district. The building coverage exceeds the planned office district for the site, as well as the FAR is at 3.0 when .5 is required. The one part of this project that is code compliant is the parking regulations. So I will stop there and answer any questions you may have, and the development team is here to make a presentation and get into the details a little more.
Thank you, Carrie. Yeah, Commissioner Strauss?
Director Teague, so the proposal, I mean, the kind of like future build-out that you showed, that was from the Grandview Development Plan?
The Grandview District Development Framework.
Okay, okay, yeah, that one works, so, but as far as the developers, all they control is the one site, right?
The one piece, correct.
So we're not, and so this, what we're showing is the Grandview Task Force or Plan...
Yes, yep.
Develop this scheme, you know, this is, and so the developers here are just using it as, I mean, but we're just talking, in this case, just the southernmost part of that.
Just this site?
Yeah.
Right here.
Okay.
It's a little over an acre in size, 1.0. Just under 1.4.
So any other projections are from other planning processes, you know, that, you know, it's, you know, it's there for this developer to have an idea of what was intended...
To guide them in developing their plans, correct.
But they're going to do what they're going to do, so, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Day?
So the first thing, I guess, that was brought, that drew my attention from the letter from the city, was the bullet point here, that it says that the proposal to rezone the site to PUD, planning unit development, staff has concern that the project as proposed may not meet most, in quotes, of the purpose and intent statements of the PUD as outlined below. Can you elaborate on that for us, please?
Yeah, the main PUD criteria that's met here is the provision of affordable housing. A lot of the other provisions talk about creative site design, providing additional green space, sustainability, so with this, I think they would really need to beef up the sustainability piece of it, EV charging stations, all of that, solar on the roof. They're going to really need to pay attention to that PUD criteria to, they don't have to meet everyone, but more than, they need to meet, yeah.
Most.
Yeah, most.
Right, right. And I recall several weeks ago, I was getting quite a bit of pushback around PUD ordinances and use, so I wanted to make sure I definitely brought that up here as it applies, seeing as specifically it jumped out to me that the city, you know, had concerns that it didn't meet PUD use.
Yeah, PUD can be challenging on these smaller sites like this, that site that we talked about a few weeks ago, much, even much smaller than this, and an approved project, so a little bit different, but yes, we need to be mindful of that PUD criteria.
Thank you.
Other questions for, we'll just go down the line here. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, thank you, Director Teague. Just a curious question on, you know, if we look at this general Grandview area, you know, how many, you know, how many sites you would say has mixed use? If I just look at, yeah, it could be this slide here.
Yeah, so the entire purple area here, it's all mixed use.
So there would be like shops and stuff on the low level, potentially apartments on the top level, or is it...
Yeah, so the, within this mixed-use center, the uses that are available are seen as permissible within this district would include residential, office, and retail. They could be mixed all on one site together, but it's not uncommon to have a standalone type of use. So this project is consistent in that it's residential, and residential is part of that mixed use, allowable uses.
Okay, so the mixed use doesn't have to be all on one unit or one parcel, it could just be in concert with everything else in the general area. Now, previously, I think row housing was contemplated by the Grandview plan, I guess, and now we're looking at apartments. Would you say that if there were row housing, the cost of that would have been, you know, the cost of a regular home in Edina would be, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars and less density, maybe closer to the 20 units per acre it would be, and this one would be close to the 100? So would you say that it's more cost-efficient for residents, having an apartment complex here versus row housing?
Yeah, I think that's fair to say.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Padilla?
Thank you, Director Teague. I noticed in the plan that there was a place for bicycle storage, I believe, and are there bike paths around here? It seems as this is getting increasingly dense, and there is discussion in the district plan about enhancing all modes of transportation. I wasn't sure whether or not there were bike paths around here, if the city's got bike paths anywhere along Eden or Arcadia.
Yeah, I would have to check. I believe Arcadia might be, there's a shared route through there, but it's an excellent point here. Again, this is, it's a pretty small site. In order to beef up that PUD criteria and justify, you know, I think providing bike facilities within the development, things like that for the residents itself.
Right, I think that kind of goes to the density issue, so, but thank you.
So just for reference, what's the height of the senior across the street, senior housing that's going up?
Yeah, that's seven stories, or going to be seven stories.
And then further down the street, that's where the former bus depot is?
Oh, yeah, that's seven stories as well.
Okay, and then the new thing they're building across the street here?
That's seven stories.
Okay, thank you.
All varying, you know, from 70 feet to 80 feet, but seven stories.
Thank you for bringing up the density of the housing, the senior housing, to the west, and that's 48 per acre, this is 100 per acre. And it's not a height, when I asked for that, it was, it was the density for just that partial, just that portion that is, that has a senior housing on it.
Correct.
Okay, and not the restaurant, not the open space.
Right, if you included the entire site, it's something like 26, 28.
Okay, okay, so this is twice as dense as that senior center?
Yes.
And they're both seven stories?
Yes.
Okay, I'm still trying to wrap my head around that. And these setbacks are similar to the senior housing center?
Correct.
Okay, so the setbacks are, the staff is kind of okay with?
Yeah, in general, you know, Eden, there is that extra green space.
I have a bunch of questions. I have a bunch of questions for the developer, and we'll all talk about that, too, so you don't have to answer that portion of it. So in this, in the transportation plan, and in this Grand View plan, and I know, you know, we've already started to kind of set aside this whole kind of freeway interchange bit, and I know, I mean, the first time I heard MinDOT kind of bring it up was about a decade ago. I remember someone from MinDOT bringing it up in the whole Grand View plan, which I was thrilled with, because it would clean up a lot of these intersections. So do you know, I think the timeline is out on the west side, but the timeline is still there for that west frontage road, and then kind of connecting the roads on the north side of this as well? Do you have any?
Yeah, it's probably beyond a tenure plan.
Okay.
Not in the near future.
For both the east and the west side?
Yep.
Okay. And then, in the transportation plan, it did have on there for Dyna Avenue to be a bike route? And I drove the site today, and I didn't see any bike lanes on Eden?
Yeah, I don't know the bike routes off the top of my head. That's something we can provide with the formal application. I should have included that.
And that's, and that's okay, we can, right, because that road has been redone to kind of square off that corner. And is there a bus stop on Eden Avenue?
I believe there is, I don't know the exact location.
On that, on the south side of Eden Avenue?
It's by the BP over on that corner, according to.
By the BP?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, those are my questions for you. Thank you, Dr. Teague.
Yeah, real quick. Can you speak to, just briefly, how the Grand View District, you know, guiding principles relate to the question of whether this satisfies the PUD criteria? Or are they, are they, do you think that they're, you know, captured within more or more of the criteria, the idea that this should account for and comply with, at least to some degree, the Grand View District guiding principles? Or is that a sort of a separate but parallel inquiry?
Yeah, I think, separate but, but parallel. I haven't, you know, I haven't taken, gone into great detail, you know, does it meet this point, this point, this point? I think we want to raise the issue that they, the applicant needs to address those issues in the PUD ordinance to justify the rezoning.
Okay, thanks.
Above and beyond, you know.
Yeah?
I would just, do you mind, real quick, it seems like criteria C, sorry, that's we were thinking about a criteria C of the PUD standards, you know, considering whether the desired design elements, or sorry, incorporated design elements that exceed the city's standards, that might be a way, at least one place, where the Grand View elements might be considered.
Yep, that's an excellent point. So some of those elements, I can just read them. Desired elements include sustainable design, greater utilization of new technologies in building design, special construction materials, added landscaping, lighting, stormwater management, pedestrian-oriented design, and podium height, where it steps back from the Those are some of the, those are some of the main, main points there.
Did someone else have a comment? Sorry, interrupted.
No, no, no.
Just if you had other questions.
If nothing else, we can turn it over to the.
Do you have any others?
No.
I guess I've just got one question for you, Kerry. So I know the history of the density range changed with the update of the comprehensive plan, but kind of in concert with another proposal, because it used to be, what, 20 to 80 or something? The Perkins redevelopment, that is quite a bit higher, though, right? Wasn't that over 80? It was between 80 and 100 units per acre?
Yeah, I believe that is at 100.
That is at 100, right? Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Difference being, they did dedicate that large chunk of land for that, for that future roadway.
Yep, okay. That's all I got for you. With that, welcome the applicant team up to the podium, and give you a chance to give a presentation, and we'll have a bunch of questions for you, and we'll try to wrap it up with comments, one by one, after all the questions are through. Thank you much.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chair Bennett. Thanks for being with us tonight, and we're here to answer any questions you have, and we'll kind of walk through it together. And my name is Nick Bernand, I'm with Opus Development, and also here with?
I'm Theo Grothie, I'm with Opus Architects and Engineers.
So I think we could, you know, we certainly can flip through a few of the pages. I know you've seen the proposal, it's in the packet as well, but we're also happy to answer any questions, whatever format works best. Theo, I don't know if there's anything you want to flip through, or if we can just kind of jump right to the questions?
I'd say if we jump to the questions, we can talk about what's in the packet for the questions.
Great.
All right, open it to any questions, anyone has? Yeah, Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, you're gonna be across from, I mean, there's a lot more density being added in this area. You're gonna be across from a park, another, you know, senior housing place, and there's restaurants and other things on your street. Have you thought about having, well, I realize you wouldn't want the whole side of the building being retail or anything, have you thought about something that either the corner or the edge closest to the top of the hill?
Yeah, it's a great question, it's one we're still thinking about. You know, there's a lot of good examples and a lot of examples that I think are a bit of a challenge. I happen to live in Morningside, on Sunnyside, 10 houses down from Millorium, so I was a big part of the neighbor outreach and feedback on the restaurant there with parking. Our biggest challenge with retailers, specifically if it was a restaurant, would be with parking. We are currently, you know, at that top end of the density, and we'd have to really try to figure out a creative way to have enough parking for the site. And certainly, the ramp isn't too far away, and there will be a pedestrian connection to that ramp, but, you know, a good example, I think it was Commissioner Smith was mentioning, parking at Lunds and Byerly's. There's a ramp there as well. People don't like to walk to ramps, so that, it's a little too far, and I think we'd worry about the lack of parking that we'd be able to provide if it was a restaurant. So if we did go that route, I think we would be looking for a variance to the parking, frankly, that we would probably need in order to do that. But we are still exploring it. There is a, if you want to pull up the first-floor plan, I think, as you mentioned, we are both, we're looking at kind of both corners, you know, I think the south corner would make a little more sense, just given how our layout is with our loading happening at the northwest corner. The bike valet and bike parking up there is something we're excited about. We've been in preliminary conversations with city staff about the possibility of a pedestrian bridge coming across 100, and if that did happen, where it could land, how that could interact with our building, how it can interact with the bike valet. So we're still exploring retail, but it could be a challenge from a parking standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Felton?
One of my questions is about the mixed use as well, and I think one of the reasons behind the mixed use was to provide a lively and entertaining, and it's, in the Grand View District, it's the guiding principle number four, pursue, well, both pursue logical increments and make a vibrant and walkable and attractive space. So, and I think mixed use does that because there's a variety of things to look at. In this plan, I see some amenities on that north side and in that courtyard, but I don't see anything down at the street. I don't see anything along the south side, I don't see anything on the southwest side. So if it's not mixed use, or you can't put a restaurant or something in there, is there a way to move those amenities around to different areas of the building so they can help animate that street?
Sure. Something that we certainly have looked at, and I think, you know, the two units on the corner is something that we were excited about, in that the possibility of having more of a walk-up type unit there. So that is something we're still exploring. We've got some pretty significant grade challenges from the north side of the site down to the south side of the site. That top image is a little misleading, Arcadia doesn't quite drop in that fashion, but we do have grade challenges, but what we're looking at is having the amenities in the center courtyard, as you mentioned, some of those amenities on the north, and then on that southwest corner would be units that hopefully we'd be able to accomplish a walk-up type unit. So you'd have, in the sense of mixed use, the mixed uses within our building is one way that we would address that.
What do you mean by walk-up unit?
They would be apartments that are accessed from the interior, but also may have stairs off their balconies where the residents would be able to access their unit from the street level as well.
And I think, for me, some of that mixed uses, it is utilized throughout the day, during the day, open during business hours, or at night. I think, when I think of residential, I think of people going off to work somewhere else and then coming back, and they're there in the night. So I wouldn't see, I wouldn't personally feel like a residential unit would enliven that corner.
Sure.
And so that's why I'm wondering if some of the amenities can move around the building a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely, something we can explore, and we will be happy to look at that in more detail.
Because I think with the windows, or, you know, people having a yoga class can enliven a corner, one of the corners, where something else can't. So I went through the guiding principles, and, and I drove the site today, and they talk about, you know, animating Eden Avenue, Arcadia Avenue. And so one comment from me, on the south side of this building, I see this as a seven-story flat facade that doesn't really animate Eden at all. And both senior housing, the new project on the senior housing, is open to the south side, and because of the way it had a rectilinear relationship to that curving street on Eden Avenue, and it had a little, they called it an outdoor plaza, plazaette, it's a little one, but it just provided some animation on Eden, which I thought was really pleasant. And then the building to the east of that, the other seven-story building, also has a courtyard above the second level that opens to the south. And so when, when I look at your plans, I see a building that just opens up to the green space, and doesn't open, and it might be 10 years in the future, but, you know, if we get a connection across the north side, we get the frontage road along 100, this is going to be a building that is open to a frontage road or streets on all sides. And so I think, I feel like it's turning its back to all of those other opportunities, and I think those are opportunities that it could take advantage of. And those, and those sides are open right now, and so they can be built out that way right now. And I personally feel that, that green space that's north of the senior housing center is enough to kind of enliven Arcadia Avenue, and I'm kind of hoping for this building to kind of help with some of those other, the south and east and north as well. And one of the questions, I've got lots of, sorry. Oh, and I, yeah, the, for me, the guiding principle number three, turn barriers into opportunities, and for me, that was the north side and that east side, and what's coming up in the future, which you don't necessarily have control of, but they're open right now that you can kind of utilize and make the building a little bit more exciting on all sides. And for me, the building kind of closing down on the 100 side, when that's the kind of the speediest side, where cars are going faster, and having the, I kept wondering, and this was talking about density, this is a lot denser, and I, but I feel like you could reorient this and open it up some, to some of those other sides and not necessarily lose a lot of density in this as well? That there could be more open to the north, more open to the south, and not having to give up some of that density. And, I've got a few more. And there was another opportunity, too, for, in providing the bike storage, I've been into a couple of apartment buildings, complexes downtown, and everybody's having bike storage now, so I felt like the bike storage is something that your, the future tenants in here would kind of require, no matter what. When I, to ask for a PUD and provide a few things for the neighborhood, I see something like if there's that pedestrian bridge going across the street, and you've got the bike storage there, provide a bike rack outside, because if you've got people kind of storing their bikes, and they've got their friends come over, and they want to go across the bike, and then continue on a thing, and they want to hang out for a little bit, or go get a beer, they need a place to lock their bike. So I, I see those, providing multimodal opportunities, is to give back and support your building, and kind of provide some additional opportunities for more interaction rather than just the cars. Anybody else? I might have one more.
Just to touch on a few of those quickly, and I'll try to hit a couple of them, but thank you for the comments, appreciate it. I'll maybe let Theo chime in on some of the facades, and I think, I think you're right, there are opportunities. We're excited to get this kind of feedback, so we can have that, that discussion internally, and start to look at that from both a architecture as well as landscaping as well. So thank you for those comments. The bikes, I think that's an easy one, we agree completely. We see that in our projects, if there's 136 units, we have 130 bikes, maybe sometimes even 140. So we plan to have ample bike storing, as well as storage, as well as bike parking outside, as he suggests, for the public. That's something that we've talked about as well. As it relates to the density, I just want to touch on one piece on that. Completely understand the density across the street is lower at 48. I do want to address that senior housing is quite different than market rate. So it's a better comparison to look at the project across the street, that's a market-rate apartment project. Senior housing has different unit sizes, they have several amenities within their footprint that you don't maybe see in a market-rate building. So it still could be the same-sized building, but less units, and I'm not suggesting they're the exact same size. I just wanted to call that out, and recognize that we're all in that seven-story range, and something that we recognize we're at that top end, but it's something that is a necessity to make this project economically viable. So that is part of why we're on that higher end of the density. Theo, I don't know if you want to touch on anything with the architecture?
Yeah. Yeah, so you talked a little bit about setbacks and some of the relief on some of those other facades. We deliberately turned the building towards Arcadia to respond to the new development that's happening over there, and the park, knowing that Eden Avenue has kind of that wider ROW that we can pack some of that green space into. We did try to make some moves along that facade to, again, provide a little bit of relief. You can see in the center portion of here, we did step it back just a little bit to kind of anchor the corners with our building design, and then allow some relief and step back in there. As well as along Highway 100, again, pulling that back, really, that's only a one-story space then, that happens along that side, before it steps back 30 or 40 feet to kind of the taller portion of the building. Maybe more work to do on the north side, like you suggest, and we'll, we'll take a look at that.
I guess I, I participated a bit in the Grand View plan a decade ago, and, and I think as a Dyna, as an Dyna resident, this whole, because our city hall is here, we've got a view across the street, we've got the two bridges that go across, we've got, we're planning on the bike pedestrian that goes across. So there is, this is our civic center. And I think because it's a civic center, and I think, and I think those connections between, across 100- between, across 100 are important, because our city is kind of bifurcated. So if we can kind of get those connections between the east and west, and we can make that Grand View area kind of feel like an extension of that, I think it's really important for our sense of place. And so I see in the future, you know, that this is between the bike bridge and the Eden Bridge, and across from the civic center, I feel like this building kind of turns its back on the civic center, and just opens to the west, and doesn't engage with this area as a whole. And I feel that that, that green space is strong enough to kind of hold Arcadia on its own, in a way. So I kind of, I kind of feel like this building needs to kind of engage the whole area and not just that green space, in a way.
Great comment.
Okay.
Thank you. Other questions from commissioners or comments? Mostly questions right now?
Yeah, I just had one quick question. These units are described as luxury homes. What does that mean?
They will be market rate apartments. So they'll just be market rate apartments.
Coming down the line. Commissioner Strauss, you got anything?
Not for the, I have just general comments.
Okay. Commissioner Day, any questions?
No, not this time.
Yes, Commissioner Padilla.
Just a quick question, is this was initially conceived, they were row housing, and did you eliminate that because of the economic viability that you just referred to?
Yeah, we looked at a handful of different uses, and we did look at, you know, as part of the Grand View Plan, some row homes, and ultimately, it was kind of eliminated from our consideration as we start to look at what worked best and what was the highest and best use for the site.
And have you considered any parking access, any other alternatives to the one on Eden Avenue? Is that a possibility to, that just is going to, you know, the more that gets built there, the busier that's going to get?
Sure.
And to have the entry and exit on that street is...
We have, and again, our significant grade challenges have been interesting with our civil engineer, but we have looked at some other options. There's likely some flexibility of where that access point falls, and something that we recognize we need to work with city staff on as well, as where that access is, because we recognize there are turn lanes today that would be impacted. Obviously, the new roundabout, we want to have an access point that's safe first, but also one that works for cars traveling in every direction, whether you're getting on the highway there. And we recognize there's a lot of changes coming. The frontage road on the east side, there's a lot of changes, and we have to make sure that it works for all those different roads.
Thank you. Thanks.
Commissioner Smith?
Sure, thank you. Thank you for the presentation and taking out questions. Mine is just around sustainability, you know, tell me what that means to you on this property. In some of the presentation materials, you know, you mentioned that with OPUS, the organization, sustainability is a really important factor for when you design and build any property. In this location, you know, sustainability for the city is really important. So just share some ideas on how do you incorporate sustainability into this building design, and how do you see it, you know, being developed in the future? So what do we have now, and how do you see it in time?
Sure, I can start, and Theo, if there's anything you want to add. It's an important part of all of our projects. It's a part of all of our projects going forward. We are under construction currently on a project in St. Louis Park, and I would like to think that we're kind of on the forefront of some of the things we're doing there within St. Louis Park. We worked closely with the city, and really are doing things that maybe weren't in their guidelines yet, but they wanted to see. So we have solar there. I should have started with, we will have EV charging stations at this project. So that is not only important for us as a company, it's also a demand from the residents, and it's something that is important, and we're seeing that increase pretty significantly where a project that we did downtown Minneapolis, gosh, maybe six or seven years ago, I think we put in 10 charging stations. In our St. Louis Park project, we have 30, with the ability to increase to, I want to say, 50. So we're continuing to see that be one of the items. Solar is another item. Our mechanical systems, the HVAC systems that we use, we're typically looking at a high-efficiency mechanical system. The, what else, the stormwater management. Those are a few of the things, and we recognize that we're on the early stages of planning on this project, but we absolutely plan to meet and hopefully exceed any sustainability requirements that there are out there.
Perfect. That's really good, you know, that's really hitting on some of the key points, I think, that we definitely want to see. I did notice as well that, you know, there's a dog run on the side with Highway 100. I'm curious, I've never lived in an apartment with dogs in it, I'm guessing this is an apartment where you could have pets. Is there anything from a design, luxury perspective, that you have to consider that's different if you have pets and animals within your building design than a building that doesn't have that requirement?
You don't want carpet in your elevators. That's probably the number one thing. But we are seeing that dogs in general, residents, we've had as high as 40 to 50% of residents with pets in our properties. So that is something that we try to find a home for in our projects, in that, we want to recognize that. I think as Commissioner Day mentioned earlier, we have a lot of cold days, a lot of times when people don't want to go on maybe a long walk. So having an area that could be to get your dog out even on those cold days has been very popular. So another amenity for the residents, and as we see more and more pets in these buildings, it's become a necessity.
Gotcha. One last question, and this is just on the setbacks. So I know the setbacks are, could be between four feet on some edges, and I think up to 15 feet, if I'm not mistaken, or more. You certainly want to maximize the land use, but what, is there a way that we could orient the building where we can have a little more setback on some of those edges, round the edges, bring the buildings a little bit more in, so it's more of an acute angle of the shape? Just tell me some ideas about architecturally, if that could be done to help, you know, improve any setback on some of the edges of the building?
Yeah, so citing the building, we really tried to pull it away from the roundabout and give as much relief as we could to Arcadia and Eden. There are ways, like you mentioned architecturally, where we can start to soften some of those corners and edges, and start to just pull them back just a little bit more. And I think as we develop this plan and work with you and the city, we're going to look for all of those opportunities for inches or feet to just give a little bit more relief to those setbacks.
Thank you.
Yeah, really what we wanted to do was accentuate the pedestrian experience along Arcadia and Eden, so that's why you see that enhanced landscaping and as much setback as we can get along those two streets.
Question around gathering, I guess, community feedback. What is your plan on that? Do you plan on doing anything outside, just, you know, the public hearing? What does that look like? I'm curious.
Yeah, we typically will reach out to all the neighbors within a certain area, and we will hold a neighborhood meeting, whether that's onsite. Sometimes we've done it in our project, the Loden over on the west side of Edina, we held it in the parking lot, we had a pretty good showing for that one. But we will get community feedback. We typically hold neighborhood meetings, gather some of that feedback, always looking at Better Together as well, and gathering that feedback. So we do plan to hold neighborhood meetings.
Okay. So do you plan on holding a combination of in-person and online, just for like residents that may not be able to attend in-person at a given date or whatever?
Yeah, we're certainly open to that, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And I, you know, I've just seen feedback from the community in terms of interactions with developers, and in-person meetings versus, can I get there, is there another option for, you know, digital? And then also comments around when they do do a digital format, like a Teams meeting or something like that, capturing the comments from the residents and the back and forth between the developers, and maintaining the records of that. Because then I've seen also comments that the developers did not accurately portray what had happened in those meetings, right? So they had received very favorable feedback on XYZ, and then residents had said that's not what had happened at all, you know? So just some things to think about in terms of gathering community feedback.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, I got a couple of questions for you guys. So I guess first to be clear, has there been a neighborhood meeting yet?
No, we have not.
Okay.
No.
I guess, Carrie, historically, oftentimes a neighborhood meeting happens before we see a sketch plan.
Yeah.
Probably, right?
Probably more often than not, it's done before the sketch plan, but not always. But certainly before a formal application, so they can...
I guess one of my other questions was, we didn't get feedback from Better Together?
Sketch plans are not open for comment.
But so it's open for information. We discuss potentially changing that to allow some...
Potentially, yeah.
Yeah, because right now, to Commissioner Day's point, I mean, if you know about it, and you see about, it's just this informing phase, sorry, this has nothing to do with you. Well, maybe minus the neighborhood meeting. But, you know, we, this is the part of the process where it's instrumental to get that feedback before things get too far. And for the future, I would prefer to have, be armed with a lot of that feedback before this meeting, so we're not making assumptions on behalf of residents, and that would just help inform, I guess, our conversation a little better, too. Anyways...
Yeah, it's, sketch plans have evolved. You recall when we started sketch plans, we didn't even post them. It was intended for just planning, commission, and council feedback. We've since changed that, and when we've started to post the plans online, people write in emails, you know, express their concerns, and that type of information has gotten to the commission and council. But certainly, I believe that was one of your recommendations to the council.
And we didn't get any emails, though, or anything regarding this yet, so...
And part of it is because we haven't had that neighborhood meeting. Usually, it's that neighborhood meeting that...
That triggers it.
That triggers.
All right, well, thank you guys for the presentation, and certainly, I think there's been a tone set of development around the area that, you know, is kind of causing us to see what we're seeing, and not a lot of that is, you know, your fault necessarily. I just, I feel like what we're seeing is just too dense in the range. And I guess, I would like to hear some of your other options. Like you said, you were vetting out some other ways of configuring the site, or incorporating, I mean, based off of the framework. It showed row homes, but behind it was something more dense. So what did, have you guys explored anything else besides kind of a standalone seven-story structure?
Sure.
And why did you dismiss it?
Yeah, at a high level, at a high level, this structure actually did open to the south originally, and initial staff feedback was, it might be a challenge to have kind of a straight wall along Arcadia, so we actually looked at reorienting it, opening up a courtyard to Arcadia, as well as opening up, albeit a smaller courtyard to the Highway 100 side. Other uses we looked at, we really struggled with layouts. It's a fairly small site. It's 1.36 acres with the different layouts, we had access challenges, we had layout challenges, and really efficiency challenges. It was just getting really inefficient. So if we looked at two separate buildings, if we looked at different uses, we really struggled with that. As far as different types of uses, we're looking at where the market is today, and what that, what we can meet the market at, and right now, that is market rate apartment. So we didn't look for, look at for sale, discussed it, but didn't look at it. I'd say the only other use we considered was, how do we incorporate some sort of commercial use on the first floor?
Okay. And out of curiosity, have you guys pursued other sites as well, like in combination? Just, you know, it's a small site, so, you know, if you were to get creative nearby and kind of offsetting some of it, just out of curiosity?
Short answer, no. With the highway, with the physical barriers we have on all four sides. We've had some great conversations about the land to the north, that is, let's see if I get this right, city-owned MinDOT easement, about could that possibly be vacated? That's something we're really excited about. We hope that gets some legs. That would be a green space between our building and the Hilltop building to the north. That's something we would be really excited about. We recognize that that's not additional land that would be part of our development.
No, no, but it's part of the story that helps sell your product.
Especially if that pedestrian connection can come across in that realm of area, all of a sudden, you know, do you have kind of that energy on the north end where you have that pedestrian connection, and almost a pocket park as you come across, and before you hit the park as part of the project across Arcadia. So to that extent, we've talked about it. Unfortunately, those physical barriers, I don't think there's an opportunity to gain any more land.
Sure, and I guess as an aside, Carrie, are there any updates? I mean, the framework has kind of always seen that becoming even just a small little service road between residential areas, like obviously not a MinDOT, you know, entrance or exit to the freeway. I mean, is there any ground on that, since we've been making all these other changes and getting rid of the speed ramp that's going down?
Yeah, nothing in the short term, but we feel pretty good about that road there right to the north being eliminated at some point.
Are there conversations that it's worth sharing, like updates on, or how can we apply more pressure to those conversations?
City engineer has been in contact with both MinDOT and the county. There's county roads involved here, too. Nothing that I'm aware of to share for the short term.
Because I know Commissioner Miranda and I were sitting through an update to the Grand View transportation study, and kind of executed goals, and that did not come up as progress, so it'd be nice to know if there was, because it affects what you guys are proposing. Okay, so, I mean, Commissioner Miranda brought it up, you know, there's this, I would say, unlucky number seven of, you know, we have every building around Eden at seven stories, and you guys have a two-story podium, and I'm assuming that's because you're limited to wood frame construction up five above that. So back to my other question of even high-level considerations of providing different housing types on the same site, of have you considered, you know, even high-level, just like, you know, row homes, or something smaller, but something considerably taller? Not seven, maybe taller? I mean, are dreams, anything?
Yes. The first plan that we looked at pushed maybe to 12, 10 or 12 was kind of an original plan. We are limited to, there's a few factors. One is if our density goes over 100 units per acre, we would require a comp plan amendment, from what we understand, which we've been directed would likely not gain support. Secondarily, and I don't know if this is, this is just kind of a general rule of thumb, but we've been told not, you should never exceed the height of the Jerry's Office Building. That's the direction we were given, and we, so we did look at, I don't know that we have it in our package, but it shows the height of the Jerry's Building, the height of the senior co-op, the height of the Perkins Site development, as well as ours, and puts them all in comparison. And we are below all of those with our current. But twofold long answer, the density and the not being taller than the Jerry's Office Building kind of prohibited us from going any higher.
No, no, thank you for sharing that. I mean, density will be a trigger for most people, especially because you're at the top end of it. And from what I see, and maybe agree with staff, there isn't as much give for, there isn't much get for that give. I mean, there's a range for a reason, so we can accommodate lower or up to that. And so, you know, we don't have a goal in this framework, or anywhere else in this area specifically, to maximize how many people fit in there. That's not a goal. So there needs to be something that's more rewarding on a public realm standpoint, or from a commercial use or mixed use, to really maximize it on this site, in my opinion. But I'd be, that's why I was interested to hear how you could reconfigure the site, and just understand what perceived limitations you had of why you didn't, and why this is what we're seeing. So I mean, from what we're seeing, I like the shape and how you've articulated the building in different ways, but keeping everything at that seven-story height, I think, is a consistency that we don't want to replicate, characterize. don't want to replicate character-wise. So as far as other questions, the affordable housing, you guys have the 10% at 50% AMI.
Correct.
And it's a choice of either 10% or 20% at 60.
Correct.
Is there, is there a reason why you guys chose the 50% over 60%?
Not, not a, no, there's not. We looked at the 10%. That's what we've typically done in most of our projects.
Okay. And I know, at least from the people that come here and advocate for affordable housing, 50% is, it's tougher to hit and it means a bit more, but you're only, back to the quantity, you're only getting half of what you could. So I think that's all I got for questions. Oh, I got one more. So page 18 of the framework, which I've brought up probably every meeting related to Grandview for the last 10 years or whatever, it shows what Arcadia Avenue ought to look like. And I'll admit, the city didn't follow suit on the west side, but that kind of gets to the point of why I'm seeking out other opportunities of design and configuring your site. Because what you see on that is, you know, units close to the street. And part of the framework is establishing village feel, you know. And having seven-story separate buildings doesn't really do that from a form standpoint. And what you see in those images is a nice public realm on the west side of terraces, but you could do the same type of thing in creative ways on the west side of your site. Yeah, I don't know if you have the picture of it, but what you see is kind of, you know, shorter buildings close to the street, and then you get taller ones behind. So even if you're doing a seven-story building, you know, doing clear step backs to make that more pedestrian scaled. So I was just curious if you considered other public realm ideas along Arcadia specifically? And how that ties to the now approved plan across the street, including the park and restaurant?
Sure. And I'll let Theo touch on it as well. Additional feedback we received early on was the desire for the boulevard along Arcadia. So I believe we've, and Theo can touch on this exactly what we have, but we've got the parallel parking, got the sidewalk, we've got kind of the boulevard. So really wanted to enhance that pedestrian experience. I think anybody who's walked either side of the site today, it needs a little help. It needs, it needs a little love. So that's one that we looked at, Arcadia. How can we have that pedestrian experience and have enough boulevard and green space? But maybe, Theo, you can touch on exactly what we're...
Yeah, so section that we got included an 11-foot drive lane, a 7-foot parallel parking lane, 5 feet of boulevard, and then 5 feet of sidewalk. So we matched that. And then we added additional green space on the other side of the sidewalk so that you're not walking right along a retaining wall like you are on site right now. We've also tried to pull those retaining walls down as low as we can get and landscape it much more heavily than it is right now so that, again, that pedestrian experience along both Arcadia and Eden will be enhanced because you're not walking next to a 8, 10-foot concrete retaining wall. We've also, you can see kind of in here next to our short-term parking, included additional green space, you know, in that kind of pocket that we've carved out along Arcadia.
And I guess a question about Arcadia again. I mean, again, looking at the concept of, you know, an enhanced pedestrian experience, you know, eliminating how many drives you have cutting through the sidewalk. So there's currently two entering your building, one and, you know, kind of accesses the short-term parking. Was there an option you considered to simplify that to one along Arcadia? Or do you need two for a particular reason?
It's the slope of the site along that. So that lower one enters our lower parking zone, the upper one enters our upper parking.
So they're not connected within the building itself?
No.
Okay. Helps you maximize, you know, not losing space to ramps inside of the building. I get it. Okay. I think that's all I have for questions. Anyone else have any questions?
I think I do.
Yeah, yeah, we'll go through, give maybe like our stance and feedback and just, I guess specifically for the developers as well as for the city council. So if there's certain things that you'd like the city council to...
Just one question, follow-up question for Kerry. You had mentioned talking to the city staff about the planning table, and they told you to break out the...
100? Can you talk to that? That seems...
I'm sorry, the Arcadia side. The original proposal, the building was flipped with the courtyard opening to the south. And so it was a longer wall along Arcadia. And the message was, you may get some pushback on that. And that's what led us to changing the orientation, opening it up and enhancing that pedestrian experience on the Arcadia side. As we did that, we also looked at what was happening on the Highway 100 side. But the feedback from staff was on the Arcadia side.
Okay.
Just to clear that up.
Yeah. Okay.
And to clarify on that, too, the framework talks about three distinct, like villages, areas. The one around the Public Works being one. And so having the back to Highway 100 makes sense. And then the civic area across the freeway. And then by the library being a third type of area. So, you know, what they're doing makes sense, at least from turning your back on the freeway, if you're going to choose. I mean, based off of the feedback from the framework, it's not just seen as maybe one entire village, but just separate areas kind of interconnected. Have any other questions? Otherwise, you can just kind of go down the line with just commentary. Really appreciate your guys' time. And if anything comes up, I mean, we're here to either pose new questions, but can stick around while we go through our comments here.
Yeah, thank you very much for the comments. And we'll hang if there are any other questions. So thank you. Appreciate the time and the comments.
Well, I'll just start with you, if you'd like to, and we can come down the line.
Sure. Still kind of thinking through it, but I think, one of the challenges is that, look, I've only been on this commission for how many months now? And I'm already sensing that everybody wants to be a PUD. Something about the way the site's owned isn't right, and we need maximum flexibility to make a project or something. And then we need to go through the criteria and say, because we're really not supposed to be going to PUDs unless there's something exceptional and unique and creative and innovative and all the, about the design of the structure that serves a public policy purpose. And, and there's tension between, you know, and we've heard this a lot. The only thing that makes economic sense is a large box with, that's tall, that has, you know, a lot of units in it. We can, we got to put the box there. And we can do some things around the edges of it, but we need to kind of get a building this tall and this big with this many units to make things work economically. That's in tension with sort of the idea of a PUD and a lot of the criteria and some of the aspirations of, you know, both the comprehensive plan and the design criteria that apply to the Grandview District. And so that's what I'm struggling with is just the economic reality that they're talking about and kind of what, what I understand a project would need to deliver from a design standpoint, you know, to kind of like meet enough of the criteria to say that it makes sense to pass an ordinance establishing a PUD for this site. And it's hard to say, what's a solution? I actually don't know the answer yet. Oh, I think there's just tension between, there's tension behind the idea of a PUD and the concept you guys are proposing. There's just a little bit of tension. And, you know, because there's nothing like inherently wrong with it or anything like that from my perspective, but a lot of the things that are being offered, I think you mentioned this, Meriwether, you know, the amenities are starting to become standard. There's parking in the building. There's a place to put your bikes. There's a fitness center. You can work, maybe work from home. Maybe that's new. There's an outdoor area. I mean, these are things that have started to become standard in market rate of luxury apartments. And a lot of, I think, the benefits that you guys have talked about is separate from the landscaping, which I appreciate. And, you know, some of those things you've done to maybe improve the, make things like the retaining wall less obstructive are some of the, a lot of the benefits are sort of those internal amenities to the building. When we're focused, I think we need to be focused in addition on some of the public policy-related design benefits that are for the public and not just, you know, amenities inside the building for the residents. And so that's just, I just think I'm struggling with the tension between, you know, the request for a PUD and the concept. And I'll just, maybe we can think through how to, because when we look through what the, what the folks who spent a lot of time thinking about what structures in this area might look like going forward, you know, we talked about these row houses. And I think the idea is people, people would like the structure to be sort of traditional, to be interacting with the streets somehow, to ideally be involving some sort of mix of uses. Maybe it's not always possible. To be tailored to the area where there's a, there's a sort of, a design that's set forth in the structure that can be carried through the different parcels in the area and not just specific to one site. So that's it. I don't have a brilliant solution or anything like that. I'm just trying to articulate the tension. And maybe some of the other folks can kind of fill in, fill in the color in between the lines or something. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Strauss?
Good. Thank you. Commissioner, I agree with your kind of sense and attention. Some of it had to do with your timing starting because we've had some thorny, difficult projects right away. And so, but mostly, what I'd like to welcome Opus back, we haven't seen you. I mean, I've been here for a while now, had projects some years ago, but welcome back in the mixer. It's nice to see you. Anyways, Commissioner Feld made that comment about the building. Sometimes we think about designing all four sides, you know, as it, perhaps not the north side, but I certainly see that as applying east, southern, and west. And I assume the front door is sort of being Arcadia? I mean, that's kind of the, yeah. And I mean, particular attention there. And, boy, I don't think anybody's going to miss the building that's existing. I mean, it's, to me, whether it's just because that happens to be a route that I'm frequently in and around, but, yeah, that is begging for, for work. And I think this is a really, with this project and across the street, the senior housing is absolutely going to make, it's the doorway to Arcadia. And I think that it can just absolutely be something special. And when we were talking about the senior center was, you know, we, we need to have both sides of the street, you know, incorporated into the design, that this in fact is a great little boulevard that I think, and with the amenities of the park, I think your project is probably south from what would be a natural crossing of Arcadia to get to that parking area. I think that's maybe another lot up. So obviously, so the very southwestern corner is going to be a very important pedestrian vehicle, whatever, all access crossing through there. I certainly like how that cul-de-sac works there. I think the city engineering, they did a nice job with the street layout. I think that's, it's all going to come together. I'm okay with the density. We often talk about, you know, in the right places. I think this is probably the right place for it. Yeah, and that's pretty much it. I know other people cover it. But to me, it's an important, it's a really, a key, a key development to make all of this happen. And a lot of things are falling into place. I mean, you guys have to be the creative ones. I mean, it's easy to look after it's all built and say, wow, this is great. But you're the ones that make it happen. And I'm looking forward to seeing it. Thank you.
All right. So really, much of what I was going to say was already captured further down the line. As you saw, I keyed in on that struggle with the PUD rezoning right away, asking the city why. They thought that we had not met most of the requirements. And looking on this, it's, I don't have a solution either, unfortunately. I wish I did. But it is, you know, a box that's, and that's what's economically viable. But as far as fitting in with the Grandview plan, it's a challenge, you know. And I think so much about, as I was driving here today, right, we see that corner, like it's basically, I mean, it's right there. It's such a prominent site, especially for Grandview. It's going to be, as you're coming north on 100, you see that horribly ugly building on stilts right now. It certainly doesn't, it's not a welcome introduction to Grandview currently. And we have an opportunity here to make that so much better, right? But you will struggle with how that works with the financial aspect of cutting down units and whatnot. You know, again, I don't have solutions. I would just say it's, you know, I think there could be more done, again, around all four sides. We've talked about that. More, you know, whether it be opening that back up a little bit more, having the open space, your terrace wrap around, right, be face Arcadia and somewhat of the south, or have another terrace on that side. You know, something that really visually stands out for that community, I think, is desired. And again, I don't have the solution. I'm not an architect, unfortunately, just a chemical engineer. So this is way out of my wheelhouse. But, you know, it's, it's something so prominent that I think in its current iteration, you'd see a lot of pushback from the community to say it's kind of just another box. It's just another, it's just another apartment building. I see that, I don't know how many times I see that plastered on Nextdoor and, you know, Better Together and other, and other sites, another box apartment building, right? What people have started hoping for is something new, creative, innovative. And there's, again, the financial struggle with that in the plan. But again, no solution. I'd just say, take advantage of any, you know, discuss it and we'll see what comes out. I'm looking forward to seeing, you know, potentially a revision to what's currently here because I think it's not outstanding in its current form. And it could be done a little bit better in that regard. But, yeah, so, okay.
Pass it to Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, I think I would echo a lot of the similar points, I think. Just a couple bullets that are in my head. You know, this, from, you know, in my, in my first set of questions, right, when you, when you look at Grandview, you ask the question, you know, I want mixed use for this site. No, it's not mixed use all on one site. It's in concert with all the other sites. And so we have to look at, how does this fit into the puzzle with everything else that's going on in the Grandview location? And what question does this answer, right? Sometimes, you know, when we look at the Grandview plan, we put a lot of pressure on one developer from one side to say, you need to have everything here that all of Grandview needs to have. You need to have it in this one spot. And that's going to be tough to do economically, right? If there was one developer that came and bought all of Grandview and then figured out how to design things in such a way that they're all working concert with each other, then we could hit every single one of these Grandview points with design, sustainability, green space, everything. But because it's all chopped up and different developers grab different pieces, it's kind of hard, right? So I think that's part of the challenge. And so from your perspective, you have to make that economics work for you because you're the owner of this one site. You got to make the numbers work. And a box with a certain number of apartments and some amenities would pass economic tests, but it doesn't necessarily always pass the entire comprehensive Grandview test, right? So I think part of what could be done here is really trying to figure out what's unique with each site and see how we fit into that puzzle, right? So we go to the senior center, we say, what's special about these guys? We go to this other site, what's special about these guys? Okay, great. We have this, we have that. What could I put here that would add to that experience? So that's how I would think about it. Another thing I would think about is all the connecting roadways. I think that's the way how we would connect things together. If I could jump on my bike, ride down Eden Ave, ride up Arcadia, ride across the top of my bike, and then ride down to another building, you know, and it's all connected seamlessly, then that's the best way that I could think you could put disparate sites feeling like it's connected into one, right? So that might be part city to step in to say, how can we make these, these connections really seamless, right? So that it feels like you're moving around. The only site here that I think has some kind of a community pull to it is the Public Works site, right? That's kind of like central. It'd be a great conversation if you go there one day and you just try to... go there one day and you just try to make conversation with someone and they say, hey, where do you live? Oh, I live in the H, right? I didn't know what you're going to name this building, but it looks like an H, so I'm just going to call it the H, right? And then someone says, oh, yeah, great. I live in the M. How's it over there? You know, like, so now these buildings have a personality, right? And that personality kind of shows itself when people get together in that common space, right? And so, we want to kind of encourage that to some degree. And again, don't have a way to think about that right now, but it could be certainly how all the other sites work together to make that experience feel like it's one place. With regards to this specific site, I think, you know, you're doing the best that you can. I like how, you know, when, when you talk about road noise, you don't have a lot of road noise bouncing around and hitting, you know, if it was oriented the other way. So I think it's oriented the right way. It's facing everything, right? How it opens up on Arcadia. It certainly would be a very imposing wall if we don't do the step backs properly, the pedestrian experience, right? So I don't know if Jimmy was talking about this or not, but if it was like a step kind of, you know, where it's lower height on the Arcadia side and a higher height on the side that's facing highway, I don't know if that's going to give that, that experience, you know, that could be one way instead of it being the same height, try a step height. Again, you'll be challenged architecturally to make this site unique, right? Maybe some tweaks on the architectural designs, but also culturally in that space, how do you make it a unique place? So I like the whole idea about dogs, right? The H could be where all the dog people live, you know? And that would be interesting. But overall, you know, I overall like the, the start of it. I would look at the setbacks on the corners, try to see how you could reorient things a little bit there. But I think for this site, this seems to be, I wouldn't say the best that it could be, but I think it's the most likely design. It's not just a courtyard on the center, but it's, it's kind of opened up on both sides, which I think is, is interesting. So, yeah, how could we fit this in, in, in concert with all the other sites would be, I think, a challenge for the city, right? As we, as we, as we look at this and how do we connect it with the right roadways? So it feels like a Grand View community versus isolated, independent parcels that just happen to be in one's, one location. Thank you.
Thanks for still being here, listening. I concur with my fellow commissioners in terms of the PUD. Also, I'm a little concerned about the density. I mentioned the traffic and the parking access. And I think, I drive down Eden Avenue and around that circle frequently, and there's a lot going on down there. And, and I don't even drive there when the buses are all going into OLG because I avoid that. But that even makes it more of a challenge along with the freeway and, and places that aren't even built yet. So that, that, that is a concern of, of mine. But what I'm hearing from Commissioner Smith, which I think is the operative word here, is integration. And I think that we're starting with a great idea and we just need a little bit of work to integrate it better into the rest of the community here. Because, you know, as you mentioned, you've got a building over here and a building over here. And I'd like to see it integrated more with the neighborhood, more connectivity. Some of these amenities there that are potentially open to the public are more offering and whether or not that's retail or, or restaurant on, on the first floor or accessibility. But I think by integrating it with the neighborhood, you'll help to get buy-in by the neighborhood there because otherwise it's off-putting to people who are already living there or, or living around there if it doesn't offer them up something. So I think there are ways that it can be inviting and, and additive to the community. When we talked to the developers about the site that was over, was it what the Public Works? And I, I mentioned, I thought that they had an additional burden of what they were providing to the community, which was kind of a space for the, the community to, coexist in together. So I would offer that to you as well, that, you know, to see it as, as kind of an additional responsibility here. And that would help make it great.
Okay. So I guess first of all, I'd like to remind people that across the street from this is, is being built on one parcel, well, basically three parcels now, a very non-mixed-use thing, even though the Grand View plan actually specifically says that it's supposed to be internally mixed-use. So I think just the fact that we're having density here is a good thing. But anyway, the failure, I think, is across the street with the city approved there. But, so let me clarify one thing. So I, I think Commissioner Smith's question about mixed-use on the map has to do with the zoning that we have. Carrie could, so, so that's, you know, mixed-use center, right? MUC, which is a old suburban zoning thing. It's not really a internally mixed-use building sort of thing that we talk about nowadays. Doesn't that sort of precede all of this?
Correct.
Yeah. So, so that's, so the, the red, you know, mixed-use that it has on that map has nothing to do with what we talk about today when we talk about mixed-use buildings. That's an old, you know, mixed-use meaning it's a commercial center, basically, is, is how suburbs define. You're either single-family homes or you had a mixed-use commercial center. So, so it's not relevant to that. That's sort of literally a red herring. And then, so that flows into my next point, which is Chair Bennett bringing up, and other people bringing up density. And at the last city council meeting, towards the end, Councilmember Jackson mentioned the latest IPCC report and how density itself, and in this case, mixed-use, helps with climate change. Okay? So, so we don't build density because we want a million people living on top of each other, right? That's not a goal. The goal is to, if we want to help solve climate change, is not just to have EVs, to bring that up again, but to have density so that when you have, you know, this many units in one spot and you have a restaurant across the street, people aren't going to get in their car, go on Highway 100 and drive somewhere to a restaurant, right? They're going to walk across the street. In which case, you know, you're getting people to use, there's a bus line that goes through there, you know, the only other major one we have in the city, the 46 bus, which goes east-west. So this is the perfect place, and somebody else mentioned it, this is the perfect place for density. This is actually where we want it more than anywhere else. Because it'll, it'll, it's fine here because every other building is seven stories. It's a small lot. I don't know how much step backing you can do on a lot that size. And I've come to just accept the fact that Eden Avenue is like a desert. I mean, there's, there's, there's never, it's never going to be human scaled. I mean, you've got OLG on one side, which is this vast open space. You've got a parking garage, you know, it's, it's just, and then down the street on the north side, you have another sheer wall. So, I mean, it's, and, and the senior housing is going to break that up a little bit. But I, I'm just not really concerned too much about, you know, how things look on Eden Avenue. And it's funny that you, you mentioned that you initially had it oriented south because I was going to ask why it wasn't because I thought most, you know, what do they call those? The amenity decks or whatever are oriented south in Minnesota, you know, for sunlight, few sunlight rays that we get. And I thought maybe it was because of the highway noise or something. But I, I think it would make more sense, to me, what I would like to see is a continuous wall on Arcadia, which would provide more, you know, it would allow for a little bit of mixed-use there. And maybe it doesn't have to be a big restaurant, but even a little coffee shop or something to get people walking in the neighborhood, you know, moving around or whatever. Because, you know, we're going to have this central parking area and hopefully, which is where the supermarket is, and then hopefully people get out of their cars and they kind of move around the neighborhood. The more housing there is, the more density there is, the more likely people are going to walk in the area if there's more amenities in the area. So that's where, that's kind of what we're shooting for. So I'm okay with the density. I'm okay with the height. You know, you're right next to a highway. You're not blocking anybody's view from a single-family home or anything. I, I just don't see how that's a problem at all. Let's see. One thing I would like to see is, and because there is such a large setback from Arcadia, or, I'm sorry, from Eden, and anyone who, Commissioner Smith mentioned bicycling, you know, down, literally down Eden and up Arcadia because that's what happens. What would be nice from a cyclist's point of view, or a pedestrian's point of view, is if you come across that bridge and some of, you know, there's a sidewalk down at the street level, but if there were a retaining wall or something so that you could walk along the building or bike along the building and go up Arcadia without having to go way downhill and way uphill. You know, it's, it's just something that would make it a lot more friendly, especially if there's going to be a, a city park there, you know, and, you know, getting to other places in, in the area. So I think that would be something that you could give to us that would be useful for the city. And you would dedicate that space to, to the public. Let's see. And then, you know, people complain about it's just a box or whatever. I mean, if you look at any classic building, you know, built before World War II, which is one, you know, traditionalists are always talking about, you look in Manhattan or, or anywhere, I mean, buildings are rectangles, you know. It's like, it's cool when they're not. And when you have a triangular piece of property, it's cool to pull that out. This is slightly triangular, but it's not hugely so. So, to me, that's, that's fine. I don't really worry about that. I think adding detail to the building, because you look at the building that's diagonally across the street, across 100, that's a pretty, that's a large building. But I remember the design was very nice. It was, it was a beautiful building. It was very well done. In terms of the four sides problem, which we bring up a lot, that's again, something that because of the highway, I think it makes it more difficult to do. Even if there is a, a road, a service road along the freeway, anyone who walks or bikes there knows how noisy it is there. And so you're not going to get, I feel sorry for the dogs, actually, but you're, you're not really going to have a conversation there unless you're like yelling at each other. So I, I don't see a lot of interactivity on the east side, so I'm not too concerned about it. Usually it's a big deal, but next to a highway, I just don't see it really being a big problem for me. And then, this is the onus on the city, although if you can contribute something to this that would help make it more puddable, that'd be great, is that if you look at the Grand View Transportation Plan, which is an R-PAC, and I don't know if you've got a copy of it, you know, Arcadia and Eden Avenue both have separated protected bike lanes, right? And the city has not done that. And even though they completely redid the intersection, there aren't separated protected bikeways. And if we can get that, that would be a huge win for that corner. And, and that's it. Thank you.
I'm not giving up on Eden Avenue. I appreciate, there's a lot of work that has gone into this, so I appreciate you're doing it. And I appreciate you're coming here and talking today. And always appreciate the affordable housing. At 50%, the median income, it's still like 50,000. So, I mean, you know, that's a teacher's salary or a cop's salary, but I always appreciate the affordable housing. And, but this is a PUD. You know, we're asking for a planned unit development for this lot. And we've got these seven guiding principles. And I actually think you guys are really creative. You're architects. You design all the time. And so these seven guiding principles, the one, the leverage, leveraging public-owned parcels, it's not public parcels, so there's only six. I actually think the only guiding principles you're conforming to at the moment are meet the needs of business and residents and organize parking to provide convenience. The other four, turning barriers into opportunities, pursuing logical increments, make vibrant, walkable and tractable spaces, improve movement for all ages and modes, bicycles, pedestrians, electric bicycles, cars, buses, and the unique sense of place incorporating natural and sustainable features. I don't think you're meeting any of those yet. So I think you've got to get more creative on all four of those in order to kind of qualify for a PUD on this site. You know, the courtyard on Arcadia Avenue, because there's the retaining wall, you're going up higher, it makes it kind of a private courtyard and not a public space. So I don't see that as benefiting the site, just the residents that are a part of this. Eden Avenue, having that seven-story kind of solid wall on even Eden Avenue, I think kind of, if I'm walking between here and there, and I don't think many people do because it's not all that, but we want to kind of encourage these other modes, I would walk Eden Avenue over Vernon Avenue as a pedestrian, but walking along that seven-story facade, I think, on top of the raised hill would be difficult to do. And I, and I don't understand the kind of minimizing the building on Highway 100 or articulating the building on Highway 100. And I agree with Commissioner Miranda. I think handsome facades are just fine. The north elevation of this building, I don't necessarily mind. What I mind is how it interacts with what can happen there, kind of opportunities for going in and out, or opportunities for having an interactive kind of bike space over there, if that's where your bike storage is. And for me, I think, and I'm also okay with a wall on Arcadia Avenue. I think if the yoga studio is over there and the yoga studio is open to the public too, well, there is some mixed-use. And it can, you know, benefit everybody. And that's it. So I just, I think you can be more creative on this one because I think it's an important site. I think the whole Grand View area is an important site. And I think we've got to come up with some really good buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I have some comments to wrap up with. Appreciate all the comments from fellow commissioners, kind of hitting everything on the head. And I just have a few things to add. And I think for me, the importance, you know, of, you know, we're looking to this framework, the transportation plan, like, these are the items that are supposed to be these long-range planning documents that really guide development. And it's not your fault, but the city failed to deliver on the site to the west that was supposed to be the catalyst to really leverage that public resource and just set the tone for all the development around. So when you had a comment of, you know, we could do retail, but the walk's a little too far. I'm like, that's exactly the result of not doing something amazing on the site to the west that's generating all this traffic and this buzz. You wouldn't say that because you'd be like, we're lucky to be here. So it gets me fired up because the framework clearly calls for like a community center and a commons and a thing to transform this area, like transform it. And that's, I'm a fan of what you're doing, like residential here is a good transformation. But unfortunately, with the transformations that have already happened, it's not a unique identity anymore. You're just kind of building the same thing that's now built on all sides. And if things were done properly on the other side of the street, I think you'd be fine. And so that's why, when I see what you're presenting, I think I support the use. And if you have an ability to, you know, again, we know that there's a suburban-style development across the street now. There's a standalone restaurant that hasn't committed to breakfast or early morning offerings. So to have something like a coffee shop or something on a corner would help stimulate other people, other traffic, other modes of transit throughout the day. Regarding design, I, I've mentioned page 18 all the time. And like, again, the city failed to deliver on the west side of creating this. When you look at page 18, you feel like you're in this nice little village and it's, it's something European. And we built a suburban set of disconnected, underutilized spaces. And now we're like, hey, but we expect you to do what this is next to it. So I can't blame you for that, but I expect something better. And so, along Arcadia, you have two drives, you have parking, and you have two you have parking, and you have two really tall parts. So I think from a design opportunity, connecting it with a wall, like, just look at the visual from page 18. You have three-story... You could do two-story walk-up units and, again, turn the barriers into opportunities. You have this nice hill that if you start staggering, it makes it complicated for the units to tie into things on the interior space. But there's ways you could get creative with separating it, maybe. And that would provide some nice character and relief along Arcadia that makes you feel like you're in this village. Because currently, you have a really tall senior housing co-op building, seven stories high. We build the same thing. You're just, no one's going to want to walk down that street. And so you guys can do the better part and do what is guided. And it'd be nice to just pick the council's brain of their appetite for a comprehensive plan amendment. So I understand that requires a supermajority vote, so it'd be a four-to-one to get that. But if you could have something shorter, and then even break it up and provide some creative pathways to get people cutting off the corner, and do something much taller along the freeway, no one's going to care about the height right on the freeway. And to Commissioner Miranda's point, like, this is the place we would want density. So I'd be willing to support 100 units per acre or greater than that if you delivered on these other areas, but I'm not seeing that right now. I guess, specific to the sides of the building, I mean, there is a freeway there with an on-ramp, and that's not going to change. I mean, it's going to change to a frontage road. So if it's just a pathway to get maybe bikes or pedestrians along and around the building that way to again, to again, cut off the dip and then back up the hill, maybe doing something like that. But to like, design courtyards and stuff facing a freeway just doesn't make sense. Like, push your density as close to the freeway as you can. Step it down closer to Arcadia and Eden. And again, I know, like Opus has a rich history of tons of different uses that you guys have built and designed, and you guys have done amazing things around the metro. And I think, like other commissioners said, this is going to be an opportunity for a signature type of product, because it will be so visible. Like, you will see this. It's kind of like the front door visually to Grand View when you're on the freeway, not necessarily when you're in the area. So how you approach, I guess, Highway 100 to the south, and how you really draw a creative design, so it doesn't look the same height as all the buildings around it, I think would do you really well. And if you can tuck another use in there, like a coffee shop, something to kind of, again, you know, collaborate with the other sites around. Like, you wouldn't be competing, you'd be supplementing. And then that would get people, hopefully, a little more likely to walk a little too far to your site. It wouldn't feel too far. Yeah, efficient connections. I guess one of the big things with the land use takeaways for the goals from the framework is, you know, different housing types. And so even throughout the city, we keep talking about this missing middle. And even if it's really expensive, it's a visual difference, and it's a different choice for people. So if you were to have to separate something that's along Arcadia that's separate, there's creative ways to have a street behind, and then, you know, just other ways to infill that space. And maybe you have a blended product. You guys have done tons of multi-use things across the metro, so I know you guys can do it. And we're lucky to have you proposing, because you guys can do that where other developers, it's just residential, and that's all it's going to be. So I think we have an awesome opportunity with you guys specifically. And I just encourage you to look at page 18 and page three, where we're really trying to create a place with a unique identity, announced by signature elements, and to really rethink and reorganize the connections in the area. And again, we failed on number three of leveraging public resources to an optimal amount across the street, but that doesn't mean that you should sell yourselves short. And, you know, this is a legacy that we're going to fight for this area, and it's going to really define the experience there. So we need to get things going back in the right direction, and I feel like you can do it. That's all I have. Sorry for the soapbox. But appreciate your time, and look forward to you guys coming back with something that, I guess, you figure out the secret recipe. Thank you much. All right. So that closes our sketch plan review for tonight, and we move to chair and member comments. So I look around and open it to the rest of the commission for comments. Any? Yeah, Commissioner Miranda.
Do you have page 18 framed at home?
Etched in my memory. Any other comments from commissioners? All right, I'll turn it over to staff. And I guess one thing to just tee up, I forget if we covered it last time or not, but did you provide an update to the Cahill District Plan Meeting that Commissioner, former Commissioner Elkhire asked us to? I don't think we did. But they had a final meeting, didn't they?
Yeah, and we are going to, oh, boy, have a work session, I believe. Oh, I'm drawing a blank. I'm going to have to, I'll just email the commission what the latest is with the Cahill Plan.
Okay.
We actually got two volunteers, but we can only have one. They can duke it out. So...
So is this public knowledge of who those two are, and do we want to just talk it through, or do you want to handle it privately? Is it better?
If you'd like. I guess we could handle it offline, too.
I volunteered.
Okay. And so what's the limit as to only one, and the reason for that?
Yeah, I think the hope is to have a member of each commission represented. But I know in the past, that hasn't always been the case, right?
Yeah. I feel like we've always had dual representation for anything we've done, for the reason of logistics, someone can't make it, someone else covers. Maybe if you could look into that, because if we have two, I'd not want to, not accommodate.
Give backup?
I think that's a possibility, and we can see what kind of, how many volunteers we got from other commissions, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd shy away from the alternate backup. If we have two people that'd like to participate, I think we should encourage it.
Yep, let me follow up on that, and...
And then I guess just a reminder with the Cahill District, and just, it's more of these comments of, as we've tried to provide recommendations to simplify and optimize the development review process, you know, the sketch plan is better than the public hearing, but the most important stuff are these district plans and small-area plans, because they really, they're really the opportunity for the residents to think holistically about the future of an area, those interconnections. So some history that I've shared before, but like, the reason I joined this was because of the Grand View area. And I think I remember you from the, like, a decade ago.
When I first met Kevin.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, going to the workshops, and that got me involved in, you know, really trying to own a piece of the city. And, you know, this is like the residence opportunity.
And then it provides us a roadmap to refer back to, based on.
And so like, when we go against it, it just doesn't do anyone in the city well, like us, as well as the legacy of this development, as well as that trust that we're hoping to get with residents and the change they see when we're deviating for no good reason.
Because there's a lot of effort that went into that plan, a ton of effort.
And similarly, there's a lot of effort going into the Cahill Plan in probably the area of our six nodes that is maybe the sleepiest currently. And, but it's vast of what it could be. And it'd be nice if we, we can provide a more thorough update to the rest of the commission next time.
Okay.
But some of the takeaways is like, the major industrial uses there, they still want to keep those. You know, they don't want to transform that entirely. They want that type of business to stay in Edina. It's currently there, so let's augment it. And then the other area is really kind of redeveloping and redefining the corner of 70th and Cahill. Like, that area was kind of the area for like, the commercial type of redevelopment. Is there anything else that was kind of overarching concepts that just we're sharing now?
Yeah, it was potentially, should housing be introduced in some parts of the district? I know they've had a lot of discussion over that.
There's a lot of pushback.
A lot of pushback, yep.
Maybe they were looking for artist loss.
Yeah. Well, and it's different, right? All of these sites are different. So that's tucked away. Like, this site is right on a freeway, right by an old interchange of a freeway, like, so these changes make sense here, or potential changes, so. Yeah.
It's terrible. As a runner, I can't connect over to Bloomington, over to the park there, over to Highland. Like, it's a death trap. There's no sidewalks or anything like that. It's like, there's a nice sidewalk over there by Highland, then you come down Cahill and all this stuff from the sidewalks, but getting in between those two spots?
Yeah.
So...
Yeah.
Carrie, can I bring up one other thing? We had talked about training for the new commission members, and last year's new commission members and this year's new commission members. So you'll send out something to us?
Yes, there is a training opportunity off of the APA website for planning commissioners, and it's an online, so you can do it from home. We pay for it, and everybody can participate. So I will get that out tomorrow. And we're also, we had talked about doing some training, either with the city attorney, or we bring in the consultant, like we brought in John Chardloin a couple of years ago, to go through another training session. Like, to do that one live, not online, where we can all get together and discuss.
Yeah, similarly, if there, I mean, like, Councilmember Rissler said, she did a three-day training back in the day, you know, for planning commission, which seems intense. But if there are other things in person locally, I think people are still on Zoom fatigue type of, like, we'd prefer to go in person somewhere together versus tune into something all day.
Appreciate it, because I'm assuming it can be kind of independent, the APA? I think it's more accessible. I don't mind Zoom.
Yeah, I disagree in different areas.
You've got more history. Listen, we're talking about the new one. You don't have to do it.
Yeah.
It's a yes and.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I guess one of the, quick one other update. The city manager brought before the city council, kind of, what do we want to do next with the development review process, since we kind of gave them a unanimous recommendation, and they've kind of punted on it. So it sounds like there's some partial interest in the leads of the group. So like, Quincy, Lori, and I, meeting with at least a couple of the council members, maybe more of them, to kind of hash out the recommendations, as well as pieces of that or other steps forward. So just as we're thinking about that, if anything comes to mind, send us like an email of like any takeaways or stuff that you've nought on, and you've thought, hey, you know what, we really should focus on this. We know communication wasn't part of our recommendation formally, but I think one of our takeaways was, regardless, or at least in tandem, we need to communicate our existing process a whole lot better. And so I think we know that. And maybe another thing that came up was getting like a survey out to the community, or some way to engage the community to find out like, what they think things are like. Because we're making a lot of assumptions right now of this isn't working, and this is what will fix it. Some of it's not as informed as it could be, was a takeaway from the council. So just if there's things you guys are thinking of that could help better inform the general public, communication-wise. I know we've come up with some examples from neighboring cities, but just send us an email. We'll try to keep, we'll aggregate some of these side recommendations to the formal one that we provided to them.
Yeah, the city manager was going to calendar a date where the council could discuss further your recommendations, and they asked for this list of what the recommendations are.
Anything else from you, Carrie? Oh, my gosh. Yeah, now for the best part of the meeting. Welcome a motion to adjourn from anyone.
Motion to adjourn?
Second motion?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Meeting adjourned.